Are you good? Commissioner Eggenberger, could you please call the roll?
Yes, I could.
And why are you so close to me?
Well, I just really like you. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberger, here. Commissioner Foster. I don't believe she's here. Commissioner Janowski.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
And Chairperson Zuber.
I'm here. Thank you. All right, and for the record, let's note that we also have Patrick Sloan and Aaron Schluto's staff, our planning staff here, and we have our consultant, Courtney Agrusov. Thank you very much for coming. And I didn't even have to look your name up this time. Awesome. All right, so we have minutes from February 26th and March 4th. Did anybody have a chance to find anything we need to correct in those?
I'm sure move approval.
Are you moving both of them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, excellent. Do we have a second?
Four.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, and we have an agenda this evening that has an item that is going to be, that was withdrawn, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so item number three, Ridge Creek, is not going to be discussed this evening. We will postpone their public hearing. Do we need to move to postpone it?
What I would recommend is yes to a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item number three and renumbering the other items accordingly. And for item number three, for members of the public who have asked, I've encouraged them, if they have any comments related to the public hearing, there's a spot on the agenda under public comment to add those comments. So if someone wants to make a comment, they can do it under that part of the agenda.
So ma'am chair, I think I need to amend the motion to approve, to delete, and we'll move item number three to our next regularly scheduled meeting, I think is when it'll be, and then we'll renumber the remaining agenda items accordingly.
The applicant will reach out to us when they're ready to come back. We had some staff comments in our latest staff review that they're going to be working on, so I don't know how long that'll take them to review that. So it could be the next meeting, could be longer.
Ma'am chair, move to, move the meeting till, until staff is reasonably satisfied that it's time to come to us and renumbering all remaining agenda items accordingly.
Awesome.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? All right, everyone, please signify your agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, very good. Oh, Aaron. Thank you. Are you? I don't know what's going on with the... Maybe it was my stuff. No? Hopefully that's not too terribly annoying to everyone. Can you hear me better? Okay, thank you. All right, very good. Thank you for that. Patrick, do you have any communications to report on?
No additional communications.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a public comment session, and the intention of this public comment session is to address any items on the agenda or not on the agenda.
They can be any items, whether they're on the agenda or not.
Thank you.
The only thing I'll add is for those items that have public hearings, such as Independent Living Alliance and the Learning Experience, those have separate public hearings this evening for those items, but anything else, either on the agenda or not on the agenda, can be brought up at public comment.
Okay, okay, so just in case you didn't hear that, we're going to take public comment for any items that are not already on the agenda as public hearings, which would be Independent Living Alliance and the Learning Experience. And if you, is that my mic that's making the noise? Okay.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I feel better. That was really making me itch.
We're all better now.
Okay, so if you are speaking on behalf of yourself, you can speak for three minutes. If you are speaking on behalf of a group, and you are the only one speaking on behalf of that group, you get five. So if you want to come, if anybody would like to address us for the public comment session, please raise your hand. Sir, could you go to the mic and tell us who you are? All right.
Thank you. My name's Richard Choi. I live at 50039 Pelham Court. I'm here also to represent Jason and Monica Walker, who's at 50149 Baychester as well, so hoping to get five minutes today. Thank you. I, I, I'm here to talk about the proposed Ridge Creek development. I know that it's been postponed, but I wanted to plant a few seeds regarding this development while I'm here. And with that, in my time, I'd like to address two concerns in particular. The first one is something you guys may not know. I've been to this August party several times over the past few years, but, but there's a bit of backstory. And it's that, over 25 years ago, seeing development was granted an easement across the Westchester HOA, which is adjacent to this new Ridge Creek development, to install a thousand-foot sewer connection to facilitate that future development. And well, now the future is here, or very much coming, in terms of these plans to develop Ridge Creek. So what this means is the removal of dozens of trees, in fact, a lot of landmark trees as well, and the creation of maintenance access points across the Westchester HOA property to, to service that sewer that's going on behind us all. I want to, can I approach, I feel like I'm in a court, can I approach the bench? I wanted to share some photos with you guys.
Just state the mic to talk, just so that you're, because we're recording, so.
I don't have copies for everybody, but it is something that I'll forward along when we get closer to the actual public hearing for the Ridge Creek thing. I'll, I'll have a more formal presentation. I'll forward to Patrick, and, and you can see that. But, but I want to illustrate here, though, is that what, what looks like just some circles on the site plan for what this proposed sewer easement might look like, it actually looks like this. It's 25 years of additional growth of these trees. There's 50-foot trees, there's wildlife, there's all that kind of stuff that's actually in this spot now where the sewer needs to go in. You'll see in one of those pictures, there's an unnamed creek with very steep embankments that, over the past 20 years, how much has that changed? And I feel, we feel, that it's going to impede construction and also the safe maintenance of these points, because that embankment's like this, and how do you make that? We're also concerned about the impact of what will happen with the 10-inch or the 18-inch pipes that will go in, the ongoing roots and tree systems that are going to be affected by the construction itself, because all of that's changed over the past 20 years, right? So the root system's changed, so what looked like a good plan, we feel like may not be such a good plan anymore. And, and on top of that, the question remains, you know, does a tree replacement plan, which is part of, part of the rules, that replaces a 50-foot landmark tree with three 10-foot ones, you know, does that sound right? Does that sound fair? Does that sound appropriate? And, and our question is, really, what are the alternatives to that, right? So back to the question, you know, what is right for the township? The irony is here that the new Ridge Creek residents probably don't care where their sewer is, right? We do certainly, because it's running through now our backyards and, and, and the trees that we're enjoying, that the wildlife we're enjoying, are going to be gone. And, and that also leaves the developer, which I would suggest that the rezoning from R1 to R1 several years ago with more sites, now they're able to develop, could give them a, kind of a different economic situation to develop a better solution, right? This was probably the cheaper thing to do 25 years ago, but the question is now, you've got more houses, more development, you've got all these other changes, is there a better solution? So that's question number one, you know. What, what the township agreed to last time to grant that easement back then, 25 years ago, is it still the right decision now? Would we, in fact, grant that kind of easement today in 2024? The second point overall is just in the Ridge Creek development itself. So the last tree survey that we saw in 2017, it's going to displace over 950 trees. 950. So if you know this old McClumpa property, like a lot of us do, it used to be a tree farm at one point. They're trying to grow Christmas trees there, right? There's over a thousand trees there, including 75, 85, at this tree survey time, landmark trees, again, that need to be replaced and moved or paid for, which this loss of greenery is substantial, obviously, to our community and to our wildlife. In fact, the walkers who are here today, they were given assurances from Singh that this property, this Ridge Creek property, would not be developed on, and they were sold their property with the view that their view would be retained, right? And they were sent pictures and promises, and now they've learned otherwise. You know, in the packet that, that was forwarded to everyone, Mr. Graywold from Singh said that Canton Township is a desirable place to live. Absolutely, that's why we live here, right? That's why we, and probably you too, why you live here as well. And I think part of that, the reason it's a great place to live, is this commitment to the green public spaces we have. I mean, look at the logo of our township, for gosh sakes, right? So that, that in itself is important, but also I think we live here because of the sense of community that we have, where all voices, including little homeowners like us, get a chance to, to be considered. So thank you for the time today.
Thank you.
And I hope you are able to take that into, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Can we ask questions about this or no? Two questions I have about this.
Could you stay, please?
Sure, questions, yes.
Very brief answers, please.
I'm sorry.
Well, I don't, I don't know if you're, I have two questions, but I don't know if they're for you, or they may actually be for our legal counsel. First of all, regarding the sewer easement, you say it was entered into 25 years ago?
Approximately when, before the actual construction of the Westchester. That was part of the agreements when they were given the rights to develop Westchester.
And who gave the easement?
I don't, I have, I, I will have to allow the HOA to answer that. I'm here as a private.
I'd be interested to know what the easement agreement says. If it was done 25 years ago, obviously, a lot can change in 25 years. I don't know, I can't remember when your development was built, but I'd be interested to know what that easement agreement says.
Yeah.
Second question I have that you raised is, you said the walkers, is that your name? You said Singh told you that this would never be developed? Is that in writing anywhere? But they took...
Sorry, could you go to the mic, please?
We moved here, we moved here from Virginia.
Sorry to interrupt you, but could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Monica Walker, we're at 50149 Baychester Boulevard. We moved here from Virginia and saw the site and was sent pictures, even from the back, showing the view of the nature, the trees and what have you, as part of the incentive in buying, which is why we bought, only to learn, I think it was last year, the year before, at the last planning committee, that they were actually talking about developing that area, which is contrary to what, you know, we bought the property for. Our immediate neighbors are also, they were there 16 years ago, so at the beginning of the subdivision. So we know for them, from them, it was also part of what they were told in purchasing land that did not, you know, was not going to bump up against other homes that were being developed. So that was news to us when we found out two years ago that that's what they would be doing.
Okay. Thank you. I guess, if this was just a salesperson who said this, I would, I hesitate in saying that it doesn't hold a lot of weight. I mean, I'd be interested to hear if that's, if that's a statement they made across the board to people, other people in your, in your neighborhood as well, and if they did, shame on them, because we've heard this come up before with other developments, and they'll say, well, that property never get developed and all that sort of thing, when in reality, much like you've said, sir, Canton's a desirable place to live, and you see every last bit of vacant land getting developed. Unless that was written somewhere, and I would defer to our legal counsel to verify, it's hard for us to enforce that, but as a commission, I'd be happy to see any evidence that was portrayed, that that portrayal was made, because I do think it's, it's pertinent if it's, if it was actually said. But more importantly, I would like to know what that easement agreement says, and if there's, I mean, like I said, 25, a lot can change in 25 years. And if there's room to modify that if need be, and I'm not saying it needs to be, I'm just, I'd be interested to know what the nature of that easement agreement was and who gave it. So if there's any way that that can be provided to...
Sorry, should that be an action item from, from the HOA?
Whoever, whoever can get it, yeah. So if you can get your hands on it and provide it to the planning department.
We can talk to the applicant about that.
All right.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anyone else like to speak on behalf of anything? Yes, come on up. Please tell us your name and address for the record.
Monica Viola, 290 Dunhill Way Street in Rivers Edge, which is behind the proposed independent living facility that is, I know, the number-one agenda item. I just wanted to speak on behalf of, as we go through that part of the agenda, thinking about the consideration of a flooding that happens over there that is pretty tremendous. I will say that not only does our subdivision flood, but I'm sure each and every one of you saw the impact during the floods of this past summer in the Village Art Factory. All of that went back up behind our house as well. And if there is a, something being rezoned there, we are really hoping for some assurances that's not going to go into our basement and to our homes, and there's a creek that runs back behind there. There's multiple homes back there that still have not been given any sort of help to clean out what happened during that time, and all of their buildings and their homes as well. So just looking for some consideration about what that will look like if that new facility goes in there and not the landscaping company.
A reminder, if you're talking about something that's on the public hearing, if anyone else has comments on anything that's going to be talked about in this meeting, we'd, we'd rather hear it during the public hearing for that item, so. Anyone else have anything that they'd like to say? By your motion to close the public hearing.
We don't have one.
Oh, we didn't open it. That's true. Okay, never mind then. All right, sorry, moving right along. This is why we have a board up here, not just me. Moving right along, we have, we have some items that are here for public hearings. The first item is number 1, 074-PDM-8125, and that is the Independent Living Alliance, or ILA. We're considering a minor PDD for parcel number 074-99-0010-704, also known as 51333 Cherry Hill Road. The property is located on the south side of Cherry Hill Road between Ridge and Napier Roads. The proposed use is, is an intentional residential community for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, which is similar use to an assisted living facility per the zoning ordinance, including 24-hour staffing. Patrick, please tell us more.
Sure, thank you. The applicant is proposing to construct what's called an intentional residential community for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And the site is located on the south side of Cherry Hill Road at the far west end of the township, the southeast corner of Cherry Hill Road and Napier Road specifically. The development is consisting of 40 units within one building on 4.23 acres of land. And I'll bring up the plans here on the big screen so that we can take a look at them. First, I'll show just the area map here, just to get a sense of the location. So the site here is on the south side of Cherry Hill Road, Cherry Hill going east to west, and Napier Road just to the west that goes north to south. And then farther east is Cherry Hill Village. So this road running through here is South Ridge Road. And the proposal is for 40 attached units in the building. There's one building proposed, and I'll bring up here, here's the landscape plan. So there's one building proposed, located farther on the north side of the site, which is the higher end of the site. And there are not specific provisions in the zoning ordinance that deal with intentional residential communities. And so what we look at is parts of the ordinance that address uses that are not specifically stated in the ordinance. And Section 2.08 of the zoning ordinance states that "a land use that is not cited by name as a permitted use in a zoning district may be permitted upon determination by the planning official that such use is clearly similar in nature and compatible with the listed or existing uses in that district. And in making that determination on classifying a similar use, the planning official must determine compatibility by considering specific characteristics of that use and compare such characteristics with those uses which are expressly permitted in the district, such as traffic generation, operations, and building characteristics." Based on that evaluation in Section 2.08 of the zoning ordinance, this type of use we classify as similar to housing for the elderly, for independent and dependent care. And the reasons being are that the building is actually very similar in design as housing for the elderly for independent or dependent care. And it's designed similar, where there are a lot of common areas, common gathering and recreation areas, there are individual rooms for residents. It's not set up like anything, like a multifamily or anything of that nature. So in the many plans that we've reviewed before for housing for the elderly uses, this is designed very much like those types of uses. There's also 24-hour staffing for onsite residents, so it'll look and function much like housing for the elderly use. On the same note, there will be very few vehicle trips, because residents aren't expected to have vehicles, so a lot of the parking will be staff, visitors, special events, things like that. So it'll function much like housing for the elderly. So based on that, we have applied the standards of the zoning ordinance that are applicable to housing for the elderly uses. There are provisions in the ordinance for housing for the elderly uses, and so what we've done is we've taken those same provisions and applied them to the proposed use. The only difference being the age restriction and the, the type of residence, but the overall function of the land use will be much the same. So the standards that we note in the review letter from staff apply to the zoning ordinance generally, and specifically those standards related to housing for the elderly uses in Section 6.03E, just for applying similar standards so that these types of uses are regulated similarly. So looking at the site here, the building, as we noted, is located farther on the north side of the lot, with the parking lot along the front, north of the building. And to the south of the building behind it, there's a courtyard and recreation area. And then much farther south of that, there's a walking path. And then the very far end of the site is the detention pond. Stormwater ponds and stormwater detention and retention are under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, so that pond must be designed to meet Wayne County standards. And then there is a, there is a creek or a drain on the very south end of the site that runs. And so the development itself is farther north of the site on some of the higher areas. And then the pond is, is in a lower area where water will naturally drain to. And then the, I think the lowest point here is along the drain on the south side of the property. In looking at some of the requirements for the zoning ordinance, what's proposed is a planned development district. And a planned development district is, it's a, it makes the development unique unto itself. It, we do apply the standards of the zoning ordinance, but planned development districts have certain requirements, and they also allow for certain modifications from the zoning ordinance in areas where the standards are not met. And we note those in our review letter, and we'll highlight some of those as we go through. One of the requirements of a planned development district is that at least 25% of the project must be open space. That applies both to planned development districts, as well as developments within Cherry Hill Village, the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District. There is about, just over 31% of the site dedicated is open space, so the site does exceed the open space standards. And then going to the end of our report, the conclusions, our staff recommendation is approval of the Independent Living Alliance Planned Development District at 51333 Cherry Hill Road, including the proposed modifications from the zoning ordinance, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and subject to the following four conditions. First, that the PDD plans and PDD agreement include modifications from the front yard setbacks and side yard setbacks of the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District guidelines. Second, that the light poles be reduced to comply with Section 2.13D of the zoning ordinance. Third, that the monument sign design complies with Article 6A of the zoning ordinance, which includes a masonry base height of between 18 inches and 36 inches. And fourth, that the planned development district agreement be satisfactorily reviewed by township legal counsel prior to township board review of the PDD application. One of the items that I want to go back and discuss are the schedule of regulations and modifications. As we noted, this site is located in the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District, which requires buildings to be located closer to the road, parking lots to be located behind the building, so that there's more of a urban and walkable feel. And in this proposal, there are several modifications from the Cherry Hill Village design standards, notably that the parking lot is in front of the building, the building's behind the lot. The building is farther back from the road than the maximum setbacks allowed. So if this was in the core of Cherry Hill Village, close to the Ridge Roads, we would probably be requiring something that was more in line with the buildings that are there. But because this is a building farther on the outskirts of Cherry Hill Village, where it doesn't really have that urban feel to it, we recommend approval of these types of modifications, just because it's a conventional design to this type of development, and it's far on the edge of the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District. As one example standpoint, a few hundred feet to the east is the Partnership for the Arts Building, and that's a building that has the parking lot in the front, the building is setback, and it still complements well Cherry Hill Village. But that's an area that's even closer to the core than this building, and it still works with it being set back farther from the road. Also, with the functionality of a building like this, having the building farther from the road adds a little bit of privacy, a little bit of security by keeping that building a little bit farther back. So that's one of the major modifications that is proposed by the applicant. And the other modifications are noted in the PDD agreement, so I won't go through each one of those. The last one, the last item I do want to mention before finishing the staff report is that the park drain in the south part of the site, which I mentioned earlier, there's a provision in the zoning ordinance that requires a 25-foot setback from the edge of a drain easement or the top of the bank, whichever is greater. And the plans do include the required 25-foot natural area setback from the top of bank or the edge of the easement, and that's noted on the plan. So that's just one item of the site that I wanted to mention. So I'll wrap up the staff review there. I'll be happy to take any questions about the plans or our staff report.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor present? All right, could you please come up and tell us more?
Can I ask, how many, how many people in the audience are here to speak on this item tonight? Just trying to get an idea so we manage the time properly.
So good evening. I'm Randy Leslie. I'm the president of Independent Living Alliance, and we thank you very much for allowing us to be here this evening. With me is Tom Roberts, prior of Thomas Robert Architect, as well as Kevin Heffernan, who is with Stonefield Engineering, and they helped us with the due diligence as well as the...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's hard to hear you, so...
Okay.
The mic picks up pretty...
Is this better?
Yes, much better. Thank you, sir.
So I won't repeat anything that I said, but this is Tom and Kevin here with me today. We want to thank you for the opportunity to, to be considered for this project. You know, when we first started Independent Living Alliance, which is almost about five years ago now, it really began from the fact that when you look at the options that are available for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, there are very few. And as, having a son who has these disabilities, when we got together with a very small group of us, you know, I was the one who said, if this is, if this is not a call to action, I don't know what is. And when we looked at, you know, where it might fit best, the inclusive, the inclusiveness of Canton is, is just outstanding. And you see that in leisure services and therapeutic rec, a lot of the Special Olympics activities that go on in Canton. And so we felt that this was a very desirable area. We are all from this immediate area as well, and so it, it fit nice. The other thing that we're looking to do here is we're looking to establish a lifestyle that is commensurate with what our loved ones have become accustomed to, okay? It is not over the top, but it is, you know, it's meant to be nice, and it's meant to, to really be an ongoing opportunity for them to live the balance of their life in a very nice and cohesive manner, okay? So that's really kind of just a real quick background of where we're coming from. So, that's really kind of just a real quick background of where we're coming from. I'm going to turn it over to Tom and then Kevin, and they're going to talk a little bit about some of the design aspects, okay?
Brief, because we do have a long agenda.
I'll be very brief. I'm Tom Roberts, architect. I've been working with Randy and his group for almost two years now, and the first year and a half, it was fairly hypothetical. We looked at a lot of prototype options for various sites, and it was recent that they came upon this site that the project has been designed for. And, you know, if there's any specific questions about the design, feel free. I'm here to address that. Floor plans and renderings included in the package are fairly explicit and detailed, and I'm happy to address any concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Heffernan, Stonefield Engineering and Design, with a civil engineering consultant on the project. To put it briefly, we're just looking to completely renovate this vacant lot. I know it's been vacant and kind of dilapidated from the landscape architect company for quite a while. What we're doing, proposing that two-story, 40-unit apartment, or independent living facility, it is more so, the use is more so not to be placed in a multifamily area similar to, you know, some other developments in Canton. It's really, we found this location to be perfect. It's really supposed to be based in somewhere similar to the proposed locations, a little bit more, I won't say remote, but it's definitely not as dense. It's not meant to be dense. It's meant to complement the adjacent residential areas quite nicely. Forty units over four acres. We're not looking to stretch this like most multifamily developments. You're really looking to maximize, minimize square footage, areas of apartments, maximize the number of units per your space. It's not the intention here at all. This is, I just want to stress, I guess, the difference between a typical multifamily and what we're looking to try and do here. Just to add to Patrick's summary of our site, we did try and put a lot of intent into our site plan here. We located the parking facilities, the loading facilities, the trash service as far away from our neighbors as possible. We tried to place it north and to the far west. The reason why our site leans a little bit to the right is because there actually is an existing easement. It is a water transmission line. It's about a three-foot diameter pipe that we have to stay away from with our building, with any infrastructure, with the trash enclosures, landscaping, and whatnot, so that's why you see it as a little bit more blank on the left side. And then, the front yard is meant for, you know, the parking and all that, for residents, for visitors, for staffing. The rear yard, you do see pavement is along the east side and the south side. That is actually just an emergency access route. That's only for emergency vehicles. And right in the northeast corner of our building, there will be a gate to lock off that portion of the site. So, any traffic over there that you might have inferred just by looking at the site plan, it actually won't exist. There will be no vehicles, there will be no trespassing in that area of the site. And the reason why we landed on this orientation, parking the front building into the rear, is because what we're trying to do is maximize that open space that's required by the village guidelines as well as the township's master plan. The rear is to more or less be as, you know, as a single-family residence, it's a backyard. It's for private residence only. It is open space. We have bocce ball courts. We have a natural pathway. We have an asphalt bike path. It's for outdoor activities and for the sole use and enjoyment of the residents. And then, further so, we located our light poles and our landscaping strategically to try and minimize any offsite glare, try and maximize these buffers, and really be good neighbors. We're trying to propose, or we're trying to develop a use that is really beneficial to the township, and really, you don't see this use terribly often in any township and whatnot. So, this is, this really is a use that, you know, we're proud to bring to Canton, and I think Canton should be proud to have, really. So, with that, we're here with any other questions. Actually, apologies. One question that was brought before was the stormwater, our stormwater infrastructure and flooding of the creek. I just want to touch on that before turning it over. In the rear, you do see that basin that Patrick is hovering over. That is a stormwater detention basin that will be required by the county standards, and it will be sized to not only detain the water, but also treat the water. So, all stormwater existing floods naturally, unstopped, right into the creek, which would add to the flooding. What we're proposing and what we're required to do is to route all our stormwater to that basin, which holds water and slowly releases it over a period of 48 to 72 hours. So, I guess in summary, our, by county requirement, we will be required to better the current existing flooding issues, so. And then, not only will it detain it over time, it will also treat the water of any floatable solids or surface oils from the parking pavement, so.
Thank you. Am I entertaining a motion for opening the public hearing?
May I chair up, move to open the public hearing?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins to open a public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Very good. Anybody want to speak to this issue? Again, I'll remind you of three minutes unless you are a representative of a group.
Just representing myself. Ben Arnold, I live at 426 Prospect Hill Street. I'm actually located, my house is located at the southeast corner of the property. I can tell you right now that that creek cannot sustain any kind of drainage to it, and it really concerns me. I understand that they spoke to the retention pond, but it concerns me that we're covering 70 square feet of soil absorption just to be held into a retention pond that's still going to drain into the creek anyway. Every time we have a major storm, my yard floods up to my basement door. During the August storms, I had four feet of water against my basement door. I really feel like we need to have this reviewed by Wayne County again, or even EGLA, or the Army Corps of Engineers, because I do not feel that this storm, that drain there can sustain that kind of drainage. And that's a real concern of mine. My son lives in terror. I live in terror every time it rains. And my neighbors here on Dunhill Way can speak to the fact, they drive by my house every time it rains, and they see the floods, and I live perpetually with a sandbag bunker around my basement door because I'm afraid of water coming in there, and all I see here is I see a storm drain draining off into the creek. I see a retention pond that's just going to drain water now 72 hours past the storm, and it really concerns me. It concerns me a lot, and I really think that this needs to be looked at to the point where we know 100% that this is not going to affect the drainage into that creek, because it can't, it can't drain in there because there is too much water going in there as it is right now.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry about your flooding. Patrick, what would you, what can we do about that? What can we say?
Well, with the stormwater that's proposed there, because the stormwater is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, Wayne County has to review the pond, not just the volume of the pond and the release of the pond and the engineering standards, but also the outlet to the drain. The county drains, those are under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, so when they look at the pond and the outlet to the pond, it's part of a larger drainage system in Wayne County. So, a lot of those questions and concerns, we would direct to Wayne County because those drains are under their jurisdiction. If they were under township jurisdiction, then I could probably give more affirmative answers or find someone in the township that can give more affirmative answers to that, but because it's part of a county system, we would have to defer those questions to the county. We can reach out to the county. Our engineering division can reach out to the county to try to get some answers in terms of what they know about the functionality of that drain system in that area, especially recently, to see if there's any insights that we can get as we look at current and future developments in that area.
That would be helpful if we could talk to the county about the issues we're already experiencing in that area that we certainly don't want to make worse, and if possible, can improve.
And whatever we can do to make the county take a hard look at this and not just their standard cursory look that they do at a lot of these projects...
Sorry.
Sir, can you speak to the microphone?
Let's address this real quick and then, so, yeah.
Sir, we understand, but let us finish our comments and then let you speak. Go ahead, Don.
No, I think, I was just going to reiterate to Patrick, you know, anything we can do to help with this would be good.
Yeah, and in our staff motion, we include this in most of the motions, but it's, you know, it's not just, it's mostly just a standard, but not just to be a standard insert, is we have in our motion that our recommendation of approval is subject to all state, county, and township requirements. So, if it's a state Eagle requirement, or a county stormwater requirement, or a township engineering requirement, those are kind of a catch-all in our motion. So, we include that in almost all of our motions regarding development because there are more entities that review these beyond just the planning commission. There's county agencies, state agencies, in some cases, federal agencies, and it could be drainage, it could be roads, it could be soil erosion, a number of development-related things that are not necessarily under the township jurisdiction.
But with all due respect, Patrick, as you just said, that's our standard language in all of our developments like this. Obviously, there's a problem here. So, we really need the county to be pressed to take a good look at this and not just their standard look. And I think we need reassurance that they've done that. And if it needs to go to Eagle, which I don't know if that's their jurisdiction or not, but whoever needs to make sure they're looking at this diligently, I think we need to make sure of that.
Yeah, and with respect to the storms that we had recently in August, I know that there are ongoing efforts between the township and the county to investigate that, try to find resolution to it. I don't know where we are with a lot of those, but it is something that the township is working diligently on.
Well, again, I don't mean to sound adversarial here, Patrick, or anything. We're the ones up here that have to make this decision, and I'd like to know that we're making our decisions on the best possible information we have in front of us. So, whatever needs to come from the county to make sure that they've looked at this, I would, I think, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask that we get that look.
I got a couple of questions for the engineer relating to this. Did you...
Alan, I think we should let the...
Oh, sorry.
First, and then we can go through our questions, if you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It relates to that.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just had one other question. It's hard for me to see the diagram. Is that showing a storm drain feeding directly into the creek from the paved area? That easement off to the right on the eastern side?
No.
That's a proposed water main extension.
Okay, all right. And then, one other thing, too, is that, the retention pond, that, if it was level, that would probably be above my first floor. It is that far uphill. So, it just, that's why this is terrifying to me. That's a lot of water being stored uphill from me.
Understand, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm wondering if we should let the pond...
My name is Pete Seltz. I live at 766 Prospect Hill in the same community, and I've been on the HOA board for the past two years. I just resigned this past year. Our residents that have lived this, I mean, we've been back and forth with the county I don't know how many times. So, when you say, "Go talk to the county and get your cursory," they've thrown it back at the HOA to a point where they're actually considering suing the HOA. Our resident, our own residents suing themselves, basically, to the HOA because we can't get any resolution to a plan that probably wasn't properly done. And then, we added the community on the other side of Cherry Hill that also goes into our retention ponds, that was originally approved way back when, when that was all one, supposedly one community, and we've had nothing but problems. And I don't even live in the flooding area, but I go by it, and I'm concerned. I would join the HOA because I was trying to make a difference within our community, and when I see their, I see them taking out carpeting and everything, time after time, we've given this to the county. We've opened stuff up, and they've passed it back to the HOA, and the HOA has, we've looked at it legally, we have no grounds to do anything to that, because if we start changing the dynamic of what was already planned, then we take on that liability. And so, you know, we're getting potentially sued for something we have no control over on a plan that was approved, I don't know, 20 years ago now, and now we're talking about putting more water into that pond and more water potentially into that river that we can't drain now. So, I would just ask, I mean, I definitely am someone that, you know, this sounds like a really interesting residence, and yes, you know, I would definitely like to know a little bit more about it, but just on the pure, you know, things that happen to our community, I mean, that is something that I just don't think we have ever gotten proper, you know, the township has basically pushed it over to the county, and the county doesn't care. I mean, I, they really don't. We've opened tickets, we've done everything we possibly can to a point where our own residents are going to sue ourselves. That's where we're at right now. So, you know, whoever is looking at this and saying, "We'll talk to the county," I want to be there the day that they actually answer us, give us a response on anything, because we can't get anything from them. So, before you approve something like this, which, you know, again, I'd like to know a little bit more about it, but please don't put any more stress on this than there already is. We don't know how to fix it, and the county doesn't care. That's basically what it comes down to.
Thank you.
And so, you're going to ask that same body to try and approve something like this? They're just going to take the revenue, so.
Thank you very much.
We're not, just to be clear, sir, we're not asking the HOA to go to the county. We're asking our township officials to go to the county.
I understand, but I'm just saying...
Well, I understand, I understand your concern.
Okay, I'd like to hear what the engineer has to say about that.
Now, we get...
Please, one more, ma'am chair.
Yeah, I'm not saying we can't hear anymore. I still would like to hear the engineer, but, okay.
Hello, my name's Kevin Klink. My address is 51333 Cherry Hill Road. That property and the subdivision they talk about has been in my wife's family for three generations as farmland. Never have we had a flooding problem in the past when that was all farmed, even across Ridge Road, which was part of their family farm. They're talking about this, putting more water into the ditch. This footprint isn't going to change. It's the same footprint of land that's going to put water in a ditch. They're slowing down the water before it goes into that ditch. If you look at this creek as it goes through that development, there's another creek that comes from the east that comes underneath Cherry Hill Road that joins that, that this has no control over. Now, you've got two bodies of water coming together at the east end of that, of this subdivision. I think the problem with the water is not what's coming into it, it's where it's going out, and I think you guys could probably agree on that. This footprint doesn't change. The way he engineered it, he's slowing down the water. So, even on this property in the ditch, if you looked at it, we have a culvert back there that actually reduces the water flow back there.
What, back there?
A culvert.
A culvert, thank you.
Back before any of that, was a subdivision. We had access into the farm fields through there. So, there is a culvert in there that actually slows the water down also. I think the problem is at the other end, where it drains, not this little bit, it's not going to change what comes in. That's my thought. Maybe, I'm not an engineer, but...
We are adding a whole lot of impervious area, so, you know, I do get, I'm concerned, sir, sorry, but we're having a meeting here. The, I get concerned about the impervious area that we're adding, so I want to hear more about what you guys have calculated and...
Right. Okay. Well, I guess the previous description was pretty spot-on. It is the same amount of area, but you're also correct that we are adding impervious area, so obviously, water runs a little faster on pavement than it does on grass. So, with all that taken into account, we haven't provided full stormwater calculations that are required during the site plan process phase, so we will be putting together that analysis. But at the same point, it is the same amount of area. We aren't adding any more water than goes there under existing conditions. Now, with a little bit of the added impervious area, it will get there a little bit faster if it went undetained. However, we're required to have all stormwater from improved areas be routed to that detention basin. So, instead of water getting there within 30 seconds to a few minutes, that water gets there 48 hours, minutes. So instead of water getting there within 30 seconds to a few minutes, uh, that water gets there 48 hours minimum after. So it's slowly released, um, which would improve the, the condition, um, the immediate impact of any rainfall. I would also agree that if there are flooding issues now, um, any development here probably won't impact them too much because I do think that the water, the flooding issue does, um, occur downstream. All the water that's currently going there is still going to go there, no matter if this is an urban setting or a farmland. Um, the, I guess, the natural soils aren't gonna allow that much water to percolate, so water will run over the surface towards it. Uh, so, I can positively say that this development would improve. The flooding issue, however, I can't say if we're a drop in the bucket, uh, just because of the large amount of area that actually flows to this creek. But I can say that this development would improve the impact of the small, uh, footprint that goes to the creek. Furthermore, uh, when we have to get permitted, permitted through Wayne County, we are directly outletting to a body of water, so a joint permit with the Army Corps of Engineers will be required as part of that. Um, which means, uh, that they would work alongside the county and the state. So, the county would be forced to, to take another look at this. Now, whether they take a look just at our parcel or the overall problem, we can definitely bring this up and I wanna thank, I would, I'm speaking on behalf of ILA. I wanna thank everybody for bringing this to our attention because without you, we probably wouldn't know about the extent of the flooding issues. We also are planning for this rear yard to be a natural pathway and open space for our residents. So, in no way would we want the flooding to affect them either. We're looking to, to develop into the same situation as our current residents. So if there's a problem now, there's gonna be a problem for our residents. So, um, when we go through that Wayne County permitting, we'd be remiss not to bring up these issues and try and make a better situation for our parcel. Furthermore, looking at our design, that footprint of the retention basin is very preliminary. We didn't run a full stormwater, uh, analysis. So that basin could be smaller, it could be more oblong, it, it could change. Um, and it, um, poss, it could be smaller and deeper, it could be larger and shallow, right. It's just a general approximation. But hearing the concerns, I do understand the grading issues as well. Having a bowl of water, um, we obviously have to abide by that 25-foot setback, but I would agree that we could shift it slightly down. Maybe we can make it more oblong to capture more water, maybe not be as deep. There are different, um, design precautions that we can implement here which really wouldn't affect, you know, it's not, uh, price point, it's just where are we gonna move dirt and find the most optimal design here. So, thank you for bringing this all up, um, tonight and bringing it to our attention. We will, for sure, um, implement it in our design here. If you have any other questions on it, happy to, uh, dive in, so.
I don't know, we're, I haven't, I, I haven't made a final call for the, I just wanted to hear what the engineer had to say.
So, um, a couple of things. The county has a different requirement than the 25-foot setback. Usually, it's 50-foot from top of bank, but it looks like you have the room, uh, to make that work. Also, did you look at the floodplain, uh, the FEMA maps? Uh, did you do your due diligence? Is that an issue, or is it shown on the plan on your survey?
Um, the floodplain is pretty contained to, uh, the creek, I guess, the embankment. Um, it does rise above the centerline of the creek, uh, quite a few, a few feet. I don't have the information directly in front of me, but that's one of the first things we looked at in our due diligence when we started the project.
Okay. So, uh, you, you would not eat, need an Eagle permit for that, because of that? Is that what you're saying?
We directly discharge to a body of water, so as part of our final permits, we will need a joint permit, uh, with the state.
From Eagle and Wayne County?
So it will be a Wayne County permit for the detention and the stormwater treatment, and then for the discharge. The discharge point, uh, will need a joint permit from, um, the US, uh, Corps of, um, Engineers, so.
Why, why again, is the Army Corps involved?
That, it's just their, um, it's triggered when we directly discharge to the open body of water. So any regulated body of water, if you directly discharge it, you have to obtain a permit.
Okay.
I believe that's true. I believe that's true.
Anybody else from the audience wanna speak? Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Jason Smith. I'm also in the same Rivers Edge community, 51200 High Metal Crossing Street. Uh, just, simple question, basically, just trying to get a little bit more clarification on the definition of the residents within the community. Trying to understand what the developmental, uh, disabilities, just wanna make sure that there is no criminal propensity of the intended residents, given obviously there's many families in the communities. Just trying to get clarification of the intended residents.
Sir, could you please come to the mic? Yeah, that, otherwise you won't be recorded.
Are you shopping, Nancy?
The, the, the residents are all incredibly good people and there is no criminal, and we will in fact, ensure that just through the application process and things along that line. And the majority of these individuals I know personally that we are thinking of having in, in our community. And, uh, they, they really are an asset to society. It, it, they're, they're just great people. So, but I, I, thank you for your question.
Anyone else?
We would close the public hearing.
Second.
Alright, we have, uh, a mo, a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright. I'm going to start at the far end with Commissioner Janowski.
Uh, maybe a little bit off of topic, but, um, overall landscaping-wise, the house residences sit near to it. I'm concerned. Looking at the elevations and stuff, it looks pretty nice. However, maybe a little bit more landscaping buffering is, especially against the, well, I think it's the east side. In regards to the water, um, I don't, I don't know what to do with that. I, I'll defer to others to, uh, have more discussion. If there is a way to make it better, I know that the soil is not pour, uh, doesn't absorb water well in Canton, so I could understand or logic would dictate that the water off the grass areas would be more favorable, but there is a lot of, uh, a lot of pavement in there, in the area. And I'd like to understand how that works, how that's retrained and drawn off and then put into a holding tank for a while. And how does that work with the, these more frequent, uh, 100-year events we've had with rain?
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Patrick, can you go to C4, the utility plan? So just a couple of things I noticed. The water main, this is kind of minor, but it'll be fleshed out. Water main isn't really, well, let's go to the south. This connection you're trying to make with the water main, you're going on somebody else's property and you don't really show where that existing water main's at. I mean, that might not even happen. So, um, that's a major point of construction to make this project work, is that water main right there. You, you'd have to have permission from that property owner. Uh, and that's a major point, I guess is what I'm saying, given all this feedback. And you're saying the water main to the, is that west, is a transmission main, so you can't tap into that, correct? Yep. And then, can you move up further north? Same thing with the sanitary, you're going off-site to connect to the sanitary. So there's two permission easements that you'll need from that adjacent property owner to make this project work. Has there been any discussions with the property owners to obtain permission for construction in that connection? There you go.
Yes, in fact, we have, um, requested, um, an opportunity to talk to Rivers Edge with regard to connecting for the loop itself on the, uh, south side of, of the property. The initial feedback is, um, there's hesitancy and I think a lot of it has to do with regard to the flooding that we're just learning about now.
Yeah.
But we have, we have asked them, um, you know, for that. And we also know that the, the fire chief has expressed that this would actually be beneficial for Rivers Edge if in fact, that we connected into, into that, uh, loop there. It is a commons area. There, there is no, there's no resident in that area that we would look to connect. It is literally, um, a commons area and we would then, um, you know, if we were able to make the connection there, we would then return that commons area to exactly the way that it is, it is right now.
You'd still need their permission, though.
We, we, we need the homeowners, so, we do not have that permission at this moment in time. Yes.
And the only thing to add there is similarly for the sanitary main, there are no other connections to a sanitary main besides that point, northeast corner. So to your, to your point, yes, we do need to work with the homeowners association to make that connection on their property. Um, as far as water main, um, that is one of our only, um, locations, locations as well. And the other location would require, um, significant infrastructure, um, going up Napier Road and whatnot, so, to significant cost, obviously.
Yeah.
Haven't gone through the two options in full detail, but, uh, that would be our preferred, um, method. If we can reach the agreement, um, it would be preferable.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Weber?
I try and shy away from the water issue. Uh, go to my original questions. And I guess I'm speaking from, or a question from ignorance here about.
The mic on.
Developmental, developmental disabled. I guess, to what extent are residents in your, in your facility disabled, so to speak? And, and where I'm getting to is, I see the walking path out there, I see the detention pond, I see the, the river at the back. Would they need to be supervised when they're out and all that? Because I, I don't want, I'm thinking more of the safety issues is what I'm thinking of.
Yeah, one of the, the main objectives of ILA is to in fact, provide a safe and secure, uh, environment for all of our residents. And, and so we, we look at this very closely and, uh, we, there is no issue with regard to, uh, that. We will, that is, that is what we're looking to do, is to provide that, uh, that safe and secure environment.
So, are they, are they supervise, I mean, like, like I said, I'm looking at like the retention pond. And I'm thinking, could somebody have an accident and go in there? I mean, does the, do we need to be thinking about the retention?
So, so ILA will.
Needs to be fenced? Uh, do we need fencing down by the river? All, all that sort of thing. So, is, is what I'm wondering.
ILA will have a 24-hour staff that will in fact, ensure the safety of our residents and, and make sure that we don't have, uh, any issues with regard to that. Yes.
And then just deferring back to the water issue. And Patrick, I, you know, I apologize if I sound like I bit your head off. I don't, I don't mean to do that, but I am concerned about the water issue. And if it's not so much caused by this development, what is the township doing? What is, or what are they doing in conjunction with the county to it? If, if the problem is truly downstream, what are, what, what's going on to solve this problem for these people? I mean, this can't keep happening. So.
Yeah, that's a, that's a point well taken. And I haven't been directly involved with a lot of those discussions because a lot of them are at the engineering level and, um, the administration level. So, um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give the wrong information or, uh, give any information that might be contrary to, uh, what we're working on. But I'll find out with, um, the engineering division, the administrat, uh, administration, municipal services department and see where we are with that status in terms of, um, not just areas, but also waterways and any, you know, whether it's blockages, capacities, things like that.
I, I don't wanna see us make a bad decision on this development when this development may not necessarily be the cause or exacerbating the problem. So, I, I think we, I think, I think as a township, we need to have those answers for these people. And if it means pushing the county, then so be it, but whatever it takes. Sorry if that sounds like I'm a soapbox, but it gets tiresome hearing about flooding issues in the township.
Well, the very least, we'll follow up with the current status of where we are in those efforts. And there are a lot of efforts being made, uh, throughout a lot of township staff and township divisions. So, uh, we are, we are pushing a lot on that. Um, I'll, I'll get more information of our current status township-wide and follow up with the planning commission.
Thank you.
Um, and then also, um, our resident service advocate had just noted, um, in a message to me that the township is working with the Army Corps of Engineers to conduct an extensive survey of the waterways throughout the township. And the Corps, uh, does have jurisdiction over all free-flowing waterways in Michigan. And the township has met with the Corps, um, actually today to work on defining the scope of some of the problem areas. Um, so we can work with the Corps in identifying this area as well. So that's, uh, some of the latest from some of the township efforts.
Great, thank you.
Hopefully that alleviates some stress for you all. Commissioner Eggenberger. Sorry, we've closed the public hearing, sir. Sorry.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, I, I think this is a great idea in terms of having a residential place for, um, members of your family. I know, I have some people that I know, families who have the same sort of concern of where can their, can their children live safely and happily. So, I'm, I'm thrilled that you came up with this idea and the, the place looks great. Obviously, there is the concern about water. I hope that, um, you're able to share with the community that is having the issues what, what you're finding out. Because it's one thing to say, "Okay, they're doing something." It's another thing to, to, as, as the community, not hearing what's going on. I would like to just say, I'm getting new carpet in my basement tomorrow. I understand what a flooded basement feels like. It's not any fun. Uh, so, uh, hopefully we can get that all taken care of. And, and I hope we can also, um, welcome this wonderful idea to our community. I think, I think it could be great.
Mr. Lee?
Yes, I wanna just say, uh, I like the project as well. I think it's a great idea for the children, um, young people because I, all of us, I think, have something like that happening. Friends or family or something like that. Uh, my only comment on the water part is that it looks like it's a much bigger issue than just these two developments. And so we're putting the burden on you, but actually, I think I see on here, it's Park's Drain that drains into Lower River Rouge, I think. So, I mean, this whole thing needs to be looked at from the Army Corps side to see if it can be resolved, because this is a much bigger issue. We had a 500-year rain. That's what I found out that was. I was surprised. I didn't know there was a 500-year rain. But a 500-year rain that's occurring less than 500 years is serious. So, you gotta look at things a lot differently. You call it climate change, I'm not gonna get into any of that, but it seems like we gotta prepare for something greater than that. So, that's my only comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, I think the excellent project. Uh, to bring along a few questions about, um, the retention pond. Uh, is that the minimum standard requirement where the county will require you to, uh, the capacity of that pond?
We'll be held to, to detain and treat the 100-year storm event.
So, can city, um, can township ask for more capacity than what county usually recommends?
That's a question we would probably.
That's a question we would probably have to explore in terms of the legal, the legal foundation of requiring greater capacity, both from the legal standpoint of whether larger capacity would be a definite benefit with a, with a planned development district. So something with more stormwater capacity could be considered a definite benefit in a, in a PD agreement. Also, there's an engineering question of making sure it's a proper size. So I don't know if there are any, any engineering concerns with making a pond perhaps too large for a site that's going to be draining to it. That, that's a civil engineering question I'd have to ask our engineers. And then the legal question, we'd have to find out.
It'll be good to find out, because they are holding the water there, releasing it after 48 hours. So I assume the larger the capacity, the more time you can hold that water to release it. Another good thing about the project is that we are all talking about it. I know a lot of concerned residents, but this is giving us all an opportunity to look at the issue which we have in hand. And maybe this is the project which will bring all those people together to solve our problems in that area. So thank you very much.
Watkins.
Thank you so much. I, listen, I, I promise you, I won't talk about water until the end of my comments. But I'll go to the front part of this development. And I took an opportunity to go to your website and look at the pro forma that you guys put on the site. And I, I've got some real estate questions. I'm just an egghead real estate guy. And I want to understand the build, dollar cost per square foot, looks like about $210 a square foot. You're doing at a full total development cost of about $9 to $10 million. Can you talk about whether that's fully funded at this point? Are you guys ready to rock, given all of the, the entitlements that are, that are, that go into, notwithstanding the changes that need to be made, notwithstanding the water, notwithstanding all the things that are here? Are you ready to go with this development? Then I've got a B part after your answer.
So, no, we do not have everything all lined up from, from a financial standpoint. We do have a, a lot of momentum with regard to that. We do have lenders in line, things along that line. But we do have more work to do. And as you look at the, the project, the timeline of the project, we have a high degree of confidence with regard to it. The, the estimate, I'm not sure what, what version that is. But we're, we're roughly about $13 million. If that was $10 million, that's a, that's a little bit old. But it, it's more along the lines of $13 million for the 43,000 square feet.
Got it. And then, given that, like, what's the timeline look like in terms of fully funding the project from now until the shovel in the ground?
We'll, we'll have all funding secured within the next 12 to 18 months. And we'll, we'll be able to, you know, continue on with regard to the building of the project as we, as we move forward.
Got it. So that follows the standard development timeline. And I, I want to be able to, to comment on, on the flooding issues. And I want to make sure that, you know, not only us here on the planning commission, but the folks in this room, we're all residents of the township, that we don't conflate the two issues. The flooding is a big, big problem. I've dragged wet carpet out of my basement as well. I think we all have. I mean, if I told people to raise their hands, probably half of us would do so. So I want us to make sure that we don't stunt the growth, we don't stunt development by holding it against one or two developers that would come that's, you know, that come behind us in our, in our backyards and say, hey, I want to do something on a proper land use. But because we're afraid, you know, our basements will flood again, we say no. Well, I don't think we should say no. What we want to say is, we take the, the people that are in this room, and we get with the county, and we get with the Army Corps, we put just as much pressure on those guys to be able to solve the problems that we've talked about for the last hour. So I think that's our, our right to, to right this particular problem that we have and can. It's everybody's problem. But I think, I think this development is a fantastic development. Looks like the units are about 600 square feet. My gosh, I would, I would, if I was a, a young adult, I'd give my, my right arm for a 600-square-foot apartment right now. But I think this is the right place for this development. I think this is the right time for this development. And, and I'll say this too, and I'm not ashamed to say it. As a dad of a, of a daughter who has a cognitive disability who's gone to college, this would be a perfect place for, for her to live, if it fits right. If it fits right, if it's not going to flood the basements that we've talked about here, and if it doesn't do damage to the township. I think we can work these things out, and you'll have a proper project. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
For my, my feedback too, I think this is a wonderful development. I think that this would be a wonderful place for people with developmental disabilities to live. I agree with what, what Commissioner Watkins just said, that we do, you know, we do all share in this problem with the, the flooding issues. And we've had it, it's not just confined to this particular area of Canton. We've had a lot of people come before us and talk about flooding issues. We do have to solve this problem. But I agree, it, it isn't your fault, you know, as a, as a property developer, so.
Well, I'm wondering, Madam Chairman, given that there's some outstanding questions here, should we, we not make a determination on this tonight and get some of the answers, like on the, the engineer himself said that they don't have the calculations yet on, on the stormwater and all that sort of thing? Just because of the nature, not saying that we have any jurisdiction over it, but because of the sensitivity of it, I'm just wondering if we make sure we have all the information in front of us before, before we make a determination on this. Just my opinion, I'm just, I'll put it out there to the rest of the commission to just make their comments.
Um, Patrick, my understanding is this is a preliminary, this is, that we will see this again for a site plan?
That's correct. So the agenda item is the planned development district. It's both for the establishment of a, a planned development district for zoning purposes as well as concept development. So if the planned development district is recommended for approval by the planning commission, it then goes to the Board of Trustees for final action. If the planned development district is approved by the Board of Trustees, then the applicants do come back for site plan review. There's much more detailed engineering plans at that time, and that's reviewed by both the planning commission and the township board. And then at that point, also, the township engineering division also does a more thorough review. With more engineering on the plan, the review becomes more thorough.
Madam Chair, would it make sense to, to move with the model motion and add conditions as they relate to the review by the Army Corps of Engineers as well as Wayne County?
I guess if we're getting another bite of the apple at this, then I guess, I guess that makes sense.
I'll give it a shot. I move the recommended approval of an independent living alliance planned development district at 51333 Cherry Hill Road, parcel number 074-99-0010-704, including the proposed modifications from the zoning ordinance subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and subject to the following conditions, that the PDD plans and PDD agreement include modifications from the front yard setbacks and side yard setbacks of Cherry Hill Village overlay district design guidelines; two, that the light poles be reduced to comply with Section 2.13D of the zoning ordinance; three, that the monument sign design complies with Article 6A of the zoning ordinance, which includes a masonry base height of 18 to 36 inches, as well as number four, that the PDD agreement be satisfactorily reviewed by township legal counsel prior to township board review of the PDD application; and five, full and extensive review by Army Corps of Engineers, as well as additional oversight by Wayne County as relates to water retention and other water matters.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Singh. Is there any further discussion? I'm sorry, we're making a motion this time, so?
I was just going to say, I, I wanted to clarify when the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers review and approval would have to take place. It does have to take place during our engineering and county permitting. However, if it's required during the very preliminary phase, that would add months of permitting and pausing if they had to fully review some half, you know, not fully designed plans before we go on to site plan approval. So I just wanted to clarify, it, we can't have it go to the Army Corps of Engineers. It will go. But is that part of the engineering phase prior to final permitting? So I just wanted to add a little context.
The point of order, to council, are we able to amend the motion, allow for the applicant to, as well as the, the township, to be able to garner the, the results of any Army Corps or Wayne County investigation and roll that into not only this phase, but our second bite at the apple per Commissioner Weber, before they get to the site, site plan phase? I know that was a ton in that question. But I think what I'm getting at is, how do we work in the review by Army Corps, as well as extensive review by Wayne County into the motion without summarily hindering the timeline of the project?
Good luck with that.
I, I really, I, you always get me with these, with these motions. I, I mean, I guess it's like, you, you can put whatever you want into your motion. How that's going to impact them and their planning and that kind of outcome would be hard or difficult for me to say. I mean, they're saying that by adding it on earlier on into the phasing of your review, it's by default going to add an unprecedented amount of time and probably cost and resources to you. So I think that's on the planning commission to decide if it's worth that holdup in the planning.
So let me pull it back, let me pose it to Patrick. So given the two parts, site plan and PDD, will we, would there be a requirement in the site plan phase for the things that we talked about to happen? If we were to move this without the addition to the motion, can we count on two things happening? Number one, the Army Corps of Engineers reporting happening. Number two, Wayne County joining in at the same time with their extensive review before we get to site plan, or at least during that time. What we can't do is, or what we wouldn't like to do, and I hope I speak for my colleagues in saying so, we want to move this with some confidence that those things will happen before we get to site plan.
Well, I can speak to the first in terms of, and I have another message from our resident service advocate, who I'm really glad is here. And she
Thank you.
She noted that the Army Corps survey of the township is projected to take 18 to 24 months. Now, that's a township process with the Army Corps of Engineers, and that's kind of its own process aside from this development. And something separate that the township is doing, although it, it's much more broader in scope. So that we can speak to just because the township is a participant. With Wayne County's review, we'll, we'll ask and we'll find out to see if there's anything going on in terms of an extensive review from Wayne County for this area or the township at large. The next thing I want to speak to, in terms of the conditions of approval, I'm going to use the third condition as just an example with the monument base height. That's something that, if it's not on the plans that go to the board for PDD, that will carry forward as a condition.
Got it.
When the applicants come back with the site plan, they have to show the, the masonry base height of the sign. If it's not on the site plan, we would still go to the planning commission, have that same condition, when, and this is back before the planning commission on the site plan. So I'm just using that as one example, that if the condition is still hanging out there at site plan review, and it's still hanging out there when we come back to the planning commission, it can be addressed in more detail at that time. If it's something like the sign base height or the light pole height, I would expect that to be resolved. Something a little bit more complex, it may not be resolved, but it may be something where we have more information, especially from a township standpoint, in terms of where we are in the process, and if we have more confidence in where we are at that point than we are right now.
So to my colleagues, I think we can open it up broadly. If we can go back and amend the motion for number five to read, you know, satisfactory resolution of any outstanding water, stormwater or sanitary matters prior to site plan review. Got it, all right. Everybody agree?
Deal with the Army Corps in the sequence, or in the schedule, that where it doesn't impact your, your performance to get to the end.
Right.
Got it. So back to council, do I have to re-
Did you repeat that last part, though? Because I feel like that's very broad, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding, just can you-
Very good. So I think we wanted to make, make it broad, because we want to be able to catch all for the developers so that they can mitigate any outstanding storm or sanitary water issues prior to, in detail, prior to site plan review.
Okay.
Which covers us, which covers two things. Number one, if there's an opportunity for, thank you so much, in the back, if there's an opportunity to get some semblance of a report from Army Corps. Patrick has already indicated that we, we're going to do extensive review with Wayne County. So that by the time the developer gets to site plan review, we have this tranche of information that goes into being able to look at that, that can be evaluated at said time, before they get past site plan review.
I'm in agreement with that completely. I would just maybe preface it with something along the lines of like, you know, in consultation with township planning commission. So it's not, you know, or planning department, I'm sorry. So that it's not just broadly out there, and I guess I'm advocating for you in this sense, right? Where we're not digging them on every little thing
Yeah, in conjunction with, got it.
That might seem like a little, you know, oh, you didn't resolve this. You know, we're looking at the bigger picture here, but we want to work
Got it. Can I, may I restate just number five, or do I have to restate the entire motion?
I, I would just amend the motion as to condition five.
Got it. Guys, I'm sorry to just take it so long. We want to get it right, though. So amending number five to include, in, in conjunction with consultation from the township, being able to mitigate any outstanding storm and or sanitary water conditions prior to site plan review. Did I get it?
I like that way better, yeah.
All right.
Okay, so we have
Thank you.
A motion by Commissioner Watkins, an amended motion by Commissioner Watkins, and amended support by Commissioner Singh. Any further discussion?
To the residents out there, I see some worried faces and some, I can tell that you guys are thinking that we're just passing this by and not, this is not the last we're discussing this issue before this is resolved. So we hear what you're saying, we're trying to get, dig in and get some resolution to it. So just try and be patient with us a little bit, and we, we'll keep digging on. Sir, we understand.
Yeah, please. Hey.
I just want to add, I recommend that you get this in front of the county as soon as possible. Get your engineering calcs, because it's feasibility for not, not only your project, but for the community. The, the quicker you can get at least one review, you'll be able to see if it's, if there's major issues. And we'll be able to look at that also, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Eggenberger, could you please call the vote?
I would be happy to. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster, not here. Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Chairperson Zuber.
Yes. Best, we will see you again.
Thank you all for bringing your concerns up too.
No, we're just starting.
Item two. We're ready for item two. I'm going to take a short break so people can leave quietly.
Folks, could you have your conversations out in the vestibule, please?
Excuse us, could you please, excuse us, we still have a lot to go here, so could you please take your conversations outside?
Thank you.
We have a long agenda. All right, so item number two is the learning experience. This is item number 010SLU-00, I'm sorry, -8007 and 010SPC-8008. The learning experience considers land, special land use and site plan for parcel number 010-99-0015-701, which is also known as 8670 North Canton Center Road. This property is located on the east side of North Canton Center Road between Joy and Sheldon Center. The proposed use is a childcare center. So Patrick, please tell us more.
Sure, thank you. This site is located on the east side of North Canton Center Road, just south of Joy Road, and it's located in the O1 Office District. And childcare facilities are special land uses in the Office District. So the applicant has applied for special land use concurrent with site plan review. So this report combines both special land use and site plan review. And in the model motion, at the end of the letter, it includes a recommendation on special land use and site plan review. So if this project were to move forward, this would be the Planning Commission's only opportunity to review it, unless there are any major changes that require it to come back to the Planning Commission. So I just wanted to note that at the outset here. The proposal is to construct a 10,000 square foot childcare facility operated by the Learning Experience. It's a, the Learning Experience is a company that operates childcare centers throughout the nation. And the site is about one and three quarters acre. And it is across the street from the Plymouth Canton Education Park. So Canton High School right across the street, Salem High School is farther west, off the page. And so the biggest comments and concerns from staff is traffic, especially in the AM peak hours, because some of those AM peak hours can tend to overlap. And the applicant has submitted, several months ago, submitted a traffic impact analysis. And the applicant followed up that with a much more detailed traffic impact study. Those are some comments that we'll deal with a little bit later in the review. And much of the traffic in the daytime, if it's coming northbound on Canton Center Road, especially in the early morning hours, a lot of that traffic ends up turning left into Canton High School, and some of it proceeds north to Joy, which is right in front of the frontage of the site. Also, a lot of the traffic that's going to Salem High School comes from Joy Road, not necessarily from North Canton Center Road. So this area may be a little less susceptible to the heavy traffic than the area on Canton Center, south of Canton High School driveway, or along Joy Road, just depending on the time of day and the traffic patterns. But the biggest concern is the traffic, and in our staff report, we summarized the traffic impact study, which was prepared on January 11th of this year. And the traffic impact study concludes that the proposed development doesn't result in any significant impacts to the adjacent road network with the improvements, which are, there are two of them. Number one is optimizing the cycle length of the signal at Canton Center Road and Sheldon Center Road in the PM peak hour, which must be determined by Wayne County. That's a signal that's quite a far, quite a bit farther south. It's off the page here. But it is an area that does back up at certain times of the day. It gets very busy. So I think anyone who's driven it during those peak hours can affirm that that signal needs to be optimized. The other finding in the traffic impact study is to defer to Wayne County whether a left turn lane is required at North Canton Center Road at the site driveway. So first I'll bring up the aerial photo, and then I'll, I'll go into the plans themselves. It's a little bit difficult to see in, in the frontage here with the tree canopy, but one of the concerns that we have as staff is, with a dedicated left turn lane, for the office complex just farther to the south, there are three lanes there. There's effectively a left turn lane here in front of this building. So if we look a little bit farther north, how that southbound left turn lane, it kind of tapers, and it goes to two lanes there. So as traffic is heading southbound on Canton Center Road, this area in front of the office building opens up to three lanes, and there's already effectively a left turn lane, both for this office complex and the one to the south with Sherre Drive. And then going farther north of the site, the road already widens to three lanes here. Two, there's a dedicated left, dedicated right, and then there's the third lane, that's the southbound lane. So there's already some widening in the road that we see farther north, especially with this turn lane that starts to taper off. And then the road itself narrows, and then south of the site, it widens again. So from a staff standpoint, we would recommend that the county, having jurisdiction over the road, that the county does require a left turn lane to make it a consistent width of the asphalt, both north and south, and to allow a little bit of relief into the road system. But as the traffic impact study concluded, that's an item that is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. Wade Trim, Canton Township's traffic engineering consultant, reviewed the traffic impact study and issued its report dated March 12th of this year. And Wade Trim is in agreement with the conclusions and recommendations of the traffic study, including advising the county engineer of the results of the study. And Wade Trim notes, quote, "The MDOT guidelines for a left turn lane indicate that it is not recommended, but the Wayne County standards for a left turn passing lane indicate that it is the decision of the Wayne County engineer," end quote. So our recommendation is that the Wayne County Engineering Department consider requiring a left turn passing lane due to the potential overlapping peak hours of the childcare center and high school traffic. And because there's an existing left turn passing lane adjacent to the office complex to the south. We have a number of other items in our report that are there, so I won't summarize them with everything else that we have on the agenda, but they're all there. Based on the items noted above in our letter, we find that the proposed childcare center in Canton Township does meet the special land use criteria of the zoning ordinance, as we note in the report, subject to the conditions of approval and staff's recommendation. Our recommendation in our, in our review is approval of the special land use in the site plan for the daycare center at 8670 North Canton Center Road, subject to all state, county and township requirements, and subject to the following five conditions. First, that the detention pond shrubs may be located outside of the detention pond perimeter area, pursuant to section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance, but that the required foundation trees be planted along the western foundation wall of the building. Second, that the light pole heights and illumination comply with section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. Number three, that the loading area is not required pursuant to section 4.02 B7 of the zoning ordinance. Fourth, that the signage comply with Article 6A of the zoning ordinance. And number five, that the traffic impact study be submitted to the Wayne County Department of Public Services, and that Wayne County consider requiring a left turn passing lane. So that concludes our staff comments and report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? Step up to the mic and tell us who you are and any further information?
Hi, I'm Sumeshwar Baldeva. I live at 114 Marion Drive. You know, I have elementary school child, a middle schooler and a high schooler. In fact, the high schooler goes to, you know, the school right next to here. So got a good appreciation for what the community needs and what is, what is useful. You know, this is a very good quality national chain that I'm excited to bring here to the city. That's all I will say. It's, you know, this is a great enabler for the community, and I have enjoyed raising kids here in the city. And, you know, something like this will enhance the quality of, you know, for our children and the new, new people coming to the community. We have, you know, engineering and traffic experts also with me to Wayne.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Bauer with Fishback. I'm the traffic engineer for the project. So one item I did want to mention is we did submit the traffic impact study to Wayne County. They were the ones, after we had completed the traffic impact assessment, the first time, they had requested a full study, looking at three different intersections, Canton Center and Joy, Canton Center and Sheldon Center, and then Canton Center and Wayne Road. They are in agreement with our study, and their determination on the type of treatment for the left turns, should it, right now, they didn't want to include any treatment for the left turns. They were going to monitor it, and if it became an issue, they were going to place a no-left-turn sign during those morning peak hours. And that is, we have an email from them with that information, so.
And I'm Glenn Sorensen. I'm with Michael Priest and Associates, the Civil Engineers. As Jill mentioned, we did submit this traffic impact study to Wayne County already, so they have reviewed it. Engineering issues with the site, really none. It's pretty straightforward. There's a storm sewer across the frontage, there's a water main in the parcel to the south that's within an easement, so we can tap into that. And there is a sanitary that dead-ends at the parcel to the south, so we're extending that north for our sanitary sewer service.
Madam Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
By Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Singh to open a public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Anyone from the audience like to speak about this project?
Madam Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to start with Commissioner Watkins this time.
Madam Chair, no specific comments. That's got to be the funkiest intersection that I've seen in Canton, next to Sheldon and Geddes. That, that Joy and Canton Center intersection is kind of weird. Glad we can get some attention on it from the county. Are good friends there, and looking forward to a great project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Singh.
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Lee.
Likewise.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Patrick, that's a pretty, it's a lot, got a lot of trees. What's happening so that we don't lose all our trees?
Sure, the, the applicant has submitted a landscape plan, and the landscape plan includes tree removal that's proposed, as well as proposed mitigation. The applicant proposes to mitigate the removed trees that are classified as landmark trees and the non-landmark regulated trees, and proposes to mitigate those according to Article 5A of the zoning ordinance. So specifically, on the landscape plan, there are 16 three-inch trees and four, four-inch trees that are proposed to mitigate the trees removed. So if the tree removal takes place according to the plan, they're proposing to mitigate the trees in accordance with the formula that's in our zoning ordinance. We don't always see proposals for that. Sometimes they're a little bit different, but this one is basically according to that formula. And then things may change along the way, so for example, and, and this would go for, you know, any new daycare. There are some existing trees that are along the east and south sides of the site that'll be preserved. Though there may be some additional tree removal around the fenced play area, depending on how site construction goes. Sometimes site construction can be disruptive and in turn a good tree questionable, and if that's near an outdoor play area. During tree removal permit time, we may see some additional removal. There is room on the site for additional mitigation, though, if that was the case.
Okay, thank you. I, I am concerned about the high school. I had three kids that went there, and I think every one of them got in some car accident at some point. Which, you know, happens when you're 16, 17. But it just means that it's an area with a lot of bad drivers. And it's one thing to say, you know, we want to say to Wayne County, tell them they can't take a left turn during this time. But will Wayne County actually do it? And what could you guys do to, to make sure that, that at least your parents know, you know, the safest way to get into the site?
Typically with something like that, if, if they do move forward and prohibit left turns into the site during the morning, it would be creating some type of a traffic management plan, and letting know anyone who comes to that school, you must enter from the south and a right turn into the site, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Weber.
You guys aren't going to like me. I have another number of issues with this, some of it pertaining to traffic. And no offense to the traffic engineer, I don't pretend to be a traffic engineer, but I've, I've had kids that have gone to the park as well. And we've all driven around that facility at peak hours. And, you know, now they're developing a, they call it a stadium across the street there in that field, but it's not really a stadium, but it's still generating a number, a bunch of traffic in and of itself, already what it does, from what it does already. The other concern I have, and Commissioner Watkins brought up, is that intersection. Bad drivers have a hard enough time, good drivers have a hard enough time figuring out that intersection, let alone bad drivers. The bigger question I have is, and Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, this will be the fourth daycare facility in this immediate area. Rosie's is down the street from here, Beginner's Inn is down north, just north of Warren, and there's the one that we just approved for the expansion around the corner from this on Joy Road. Is that, is that correct?
Actually, in this graphic, if we go to the east a little bit, this is the Plymouth Canton Monastery School.
Okay, that's, that's the facility I'm thinking of. I'm sorry. But we just approved expansion of that facility too, correct?
Yep.
And, and further on agenda tonight, we have yet another daycare facility that's up for approval further down Canton Center Road. And I, I don't want to, I don't want to equate a daycare facility to a car wash. But at, at what point are we saturated in an area with similar facilities? And at least with the car washes, they're kind of spread out around the township. But here we're putting a number of similar facilities in, in this area that generate a lot of traffic next to a facility that already generates a tremendous amount of traffic. I, I'm sorry, I really have to question the, the traffic studies. I understand what you're saying. I don't know if just putting in a passing lane solves the problem, but I really hate to see two things. I hate to see as clear-cut a, a piece of property for a facility that, I don't know if it'll succeed or not. I mean, there are other daycare facilities in the area that have not been successful and have closed up. I know market forces dictate that. But there's other issues, extraneous issues here that I, I think are detrimental to this, to the area to put this facility in. I'm, I'm not anti daycare. I just, I just don't like this site for it, for various reasons, and and it's probably, and I, I'm sorry to say too, I don't think it's any fault of yours. I think it disservices done in the community when they built the park and didn't put the proper infrastructure in, in place for it. But that's the way it is now, and I, I hate to do something that one, destroys all the trees, first of all, and then second of all, exacerbates a problem that I know that I've observed firsthand, I think most of us have observed firsthand in that area for years. That's all I have to say, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
So Wayne County said they don't want a left turn lane, is that correct? What's the reasoning behind that?
We didn't have any, there was no reasoning, I guess, explained to us. But that was their recommendation, is that it would be a prohibited left turn.
Prohibited left turn into the site?
Into the site, yep.
So you'll have to come from the south, and that's a, a programming exercise by, by management staff, correct?
Correct.
Was there any issues exiting during peak hour?
No, we, we didn't have any concerns with exiting or queuing in the driveway with leaving the site.
Okay. I'm just surprised that Wayne County would just say that you don't need a left turn lane there. I mean, there's a lot of traffic in that area, just like everyone else said. But again, you know, Wayne, I've worked with you, and, you know, Wade Trim, Wade Trim reviewed the traffic study, Patrick, and it was all correct, right? So.
Yeah, they were in agreement with the conclusions.
Okay. So what if parents start to make that left turn? What, what happens, I guess? Like, what do you do?
In all honesty, that becomes an enforcement issue that-
For the owner.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. The other issue is, it looks like there's regulated wetlands. There's two big ones on the site. Did, are you getting Eagle permitting or mitigation for that?
Yes, we, we would be required to go to Eagle to get permit to fill those wetlands. And as part of that, they will require mitigation, usually at a ratio of one and a half to one. So we will be forced to mitigate for those losses of wetlands. Those two wetlands are regulated because they're within basically a couple feet of the jurisdictional- the jurisdictional boundary of five hundred feet of the drain, ten feet more and they wouldn't be regulated, but since they are, we're, we're required to mitigate for them.
Sure.
So, we will be getting a permit for those.
Jill, do you know if the county would require additional right-of-way for Canton Center? You've got eighty-six, I think.
It, looking at it roughly, it appears that there may be issues with right-of-way if they were to.
I think there will be.
Yeah, so I, that might be what is, um, leading them to make that decision.
They always want more property, but they don't wanna build anything. They don't, they don't wanna maintain anything, that's the county for you. Okay.
I can add to that, there's, just, I looked at the tax mass before coming to the meeting tonight and those are supposed, there are like four residences just across the street, there's those two directly across and the two further south. Um, it doesn't look like there's a full expanded right-of-way, probably just thirty-three feet or half of that on that side and those houses are built pretty close to the road, to the point where some of their front porches would be ten feet off of the traveled lane. So, I am assuming that that goes into part of Wayne County's decision is there's two houses that are exceptionally close to the road already and we, it would be losing some large trees and some of their landscape buffering.
I, I don't think they care about that, honestly. When they ask for right-of-way, they want that right-of-way, they don't care what surrounds it.
Yeah.
But I only bring it up because it affects your site plan and it affects the frontage walk, um, of what goes to, uh, planning also, so I'm just raising concerns.
I was discussing the houses on the other side of the road that I don't think there's enough room to do a full widening and you would be shifting east of where there actually is right-of-way and the traffic geometry would not work well.
And the county is okay with extending the taper past your property line?
Yes, they've already reviewed that and given it approval, that's their standard taper, as long as the, uh, the curb radius ends at your property line.
Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Janowski. I, I share the concerns about traffic 'cause, you know, it's, I, I don't have kids, so I haven't had any kids at the park, but, um, I have friends who have and it's pretty awful sometimes, um, but, you know, I don't think that's a penalty we can assess on you.
I've got it, I can do it. Alright, let's do it.
Alright.
I move to recommend approval of special land use and site plan for a daycare center at eighty-six seventy North Canton Center Road, um, parcel number zero-one-zero-dash-nine-nine dash zero-one-five-dash-seven-zero-one, subject to all state, county and township requirements and subject to the following conditions. One, that the detention pond shrubs be located outside the detention pond perimeter area pursuant to Section five point zero seven of the zoning ordinance, but that the required foundation trees be planted along the western foundation wall of the building. Two, that the light pole heights and illumination comply with Section two point one-three of the zoning ordinance. Three, that the loading area is not required pursuant to Section four point oh-two-B-seven of the zoning ordinance. Four, that the signage comply with Article six-A of the zoning ordinance. And five, that the traffic impact study be submitted to the Wayne County Department of Public Services and that Wayne County consider requiring a left turn passing lane.
Alright, thank you very much. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Singh. Any further discussion? Could you please call the vote?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eganberger, yes. Commissioner Foster. Oop, not here. Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
No.
Commissioners, Chairperson Zuber.
Yes. Great, very good. Motion carries? Good luck. Patrick, next steps are?
Uh, next steps will be for, um, the applications to proceed to the Township Board of Trustees for final action. So, any of the, um, conditions, we'll try to get those wrapped up before it goes to the Board of Trustees, so it'll either be later this month or early May.
Good, thank you. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Alright, next item, we are, now.
Quick question, was that motions for both of them? The site plan and the special land use?
Yes.
Okay, just confirming, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so item number three is, um, I, I do not know how to pronounce this.
Uh, ZB West? Uh, ZB.
Thank you.
ZB West?
ZB West. Okay, so item number three is, uh, zero-two-eight-dash-S-P-X-dash-eight-one-nine-four, the ZB West Nature Area. We're considering site plan for parcel number, uh, zero-two-eight-dash-nine-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-two-dash-seven-zero-one. The property is located on the northwest corner of Ford and Ridge Roads. Proposed use is a township-initiated public park and nature area. Patrick, tell us all about it, please.
Alright, thank you. Um, the proposed improvements to the ZB West Nature Area, uh, this is a township-sponsored project, so here this evening to, um, present the project are Jeanette Ilo, Canton Township Project in Operations Supervisor, um, and John LaFever, the Community Development Director and, uh, representatives from Partners in Architecture who are the site designers. And, uh, the proposal is improvements to the ZB West Nature Area, which is a one-hundred-and-thirty-two-acre township park located at the northwest corner of Ford Road and Ridge Road. And Canton Township had purchased the land in two thousand with grant funds from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund and at that time, the land was comprised of a mix of old farmland, wetlands and woodlands. Um, over the years, there have been a lot of planning efforts, uh, for this site in terms of, uh, future use and development and over time, uh, there's been construction of a gravel parking lot, there's been construction of a gravel trail that's actually followed a water main, so, um, it's kind of a natural, um, area to put a trail, uh, but there hasn't really been any substantial site development. Um, so what's proposed, um, in the plan, um, this evening is, um, to keep the, uh, area mostly as a nature preserve, so bringing up the aerial photo generally of the ZB West Nature Area outlined in black here are the two parcels subject, um, to this application and the area that is on the east side outlined in orange, that's generally the project area and not all of which will be developed. So, by and large, this will remain a, um, a rural, natural area type of, uh, park. So, if we zoom in on those, that orange area which is on the left side of this page, uh, many of the areas are remaining open, they may have walking trails around them, they may have additional tree planting, but very little development. As we zoom in, there's the existing gravel parking lot that will be better delineated, there'll be, um, a little bit more gravel added, the, the spaces will be a little bit more orderly so that it'll be easier for users to get there. The east end of the parking lot will have concrete, so there will be barrier-free parking, um, as well as some non-barrier-free spaces, um, where there's gonna be direct concrete access so that, uh, people can get from a paved space directly, um, over hard surfaces to the playground area. Uh, the major amenity that's proposed is the playground area here. Uh, there's a, a mix of different, uh, recreational equipment, sitting areas, uh, areas for shade, uh, picnic areas, uh, things like that, so, um, a playground area, but also just an area to, um, sit outside and enjoy nature. Uh, farther north of the playground area across the main drive, uh, there are areas for a pollinator garden, a fruit tree orchard, so, um, using that space, but, um, taking advantage of some of the natural amenities to have something like that at the park. Um, so, um, I'll kinda skip through a lot of the development review standards in the letter, uh, they're all there. Uh, one item or two items I wanted to mention was first, that, uh, because this is a public park, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires the Planning Commission to review it, so even though the township is the project sponsor, um, by state law, the Planning Commission reviews the park plan. Uh, the second is that there's a provision in the zoning ordinance, Section two point one-six-B, that allows for the Township Board to allow itself certain exemptions from the zoning ordinance and in considering those exemptions, the number one thing that we look at is, um, do those, do those exemptions result in, uh, better service delivery to the public? And in the case of a, uh, natural area, a natural area park, there are a number of exemptions that are proposed, um, which include, um, having a parking lot that's not paved, to have a gravel, to have a part of the, uh, driving lane to the parking area that is not paved but is gravel. Uh, there's a number of other proposed exemptions with the park and a lot of it is geared toward having, um, a, a park in a nature area that still services the public and applying the development standards in a way that can provide that service delivery and not have to meet all the development standards like adding additional paving and doing certain things where you might for a commercial area or an industrial area. So, there's a number of exemptions, but there's findings in our letter in terms of reasons for those exemptions and how, um, they don't undermine any of the service delivery to the public and the users of the nature area. Uh, so with that, our staff recommendation is approval of the site plan for ZB West Nature Area at sixty-one-twenty-five North Ridge Road, uh, subject to all state, county and township requirements, um, except for modifications recommended pursuant to Section two point one-six-B of the zoning ordinance for the driveway width, parking and driveway surfacing, landscaping, lighting, sign design and fencing as shown on the plans. Uh, so that concludes our staff report and, uh, we're happy to take any questions and, um, again, the Township staff and consultants are also here to answer questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Alright.
Good evening, um, as we indicated last month, we got a lot of things coming and it's really exciting. I'm Jeanette Ilo, the Project in Operations Supervisor for Canton Township and with me tonight are Stephen Leachman from Partners in Architecture and Jim Eppink, who was our landscape architect on this project. We're really appreciative of the opportunity to, um, finally get to develop part of this parcel. Um, when I started with the township back in oh-four, it was like our first master plan, um, through the process and it's been master planned many times and I know several of you have sat through those, um, public input sessions and have been a part of it and when we first were going to do this property, it was gonna be a very active space and lots of athletic fields and things like that. And we found over time that we could centralize those athletic fields in some of our other parks and help preserve the natural space of this area. And last May, the township adopted the new ordinance designating this as a natural area and therefore preserving a majority of the space in perpetuity unless there's a majority vote, um, deciding otherwise and so we can't develop over ten percent of the parcel and that's a good thing. Um, we're trying as much as possible to be respectful for the natural beauty of the space. If you walk out there for any amount of time, you see hawks and falcons and lots of other creatures through the area as well as lots of different plantings and things like that. And, um, through our partnership with these gentlemen here and their, their teams, um, we've been able to focus primarily on the area that's in the southeast portion against Ridge Road and we did that because most of the neighbors that came forth after several of our master planning processes were like, we, we enjoy the natural space behind our homes and we like to be able to walk through the trails and things like that, but we wanna make sure that there's not new activity happening directly behind our homes, especially for those that have lived there for a long time. But we also know that there's neighbors that moved in adjacent expecting a park to take place, so we needed to kinda marry those two things together. So, we utilized the existing parking lot that's there, enhancing it with trees and bumper blocks and kind of, um, solidifying what that parking will look like and then we tried to pick a playground that was nature-themed, that kinda fit with the environment and we identified, um, through a lot of research that, um, Jim and the team has done, um, a playground that's very unique to the area. It would be very iconic to the township, it would be something that no other playground in the area has and, um, is very, um, suitable for the environment. And when the township renamed the park, um, ZB West Nature Area, ZB West means creek for the people of the Potawatomi and, um, so we tried as much as possible to respect the fact that the Fellows Creek runs through the parcel and there's a lot of rain gardens added, um, different natural plantings and things like that, but adding that, um, the flow of water through some of our design, um, on the playground and through the signage and things like that, um, so that we can kind of lend ourselves, um, towards that name that we had placed on the property. So, we appreciate the opportunity to develop this, we know that, um, connectivity is huge and so, um, part of that involves putting a sidewalk from the parking area that also goes towards the south. The township is currently working on, um, their bid proposals for the sidewalk gap connection program for the current year and their intention is to incorporate that corner gap that, um, exists on the, the Ford Road walkway, um, up to where the park, um, site plan and so that will be a connection that'll allow our neighbors from various directions to be able to access the park, not just through the central, um, walkway, but, um, also adding some access as far as sidewalks and that'll come through the sidewalk gap program later this year, so, um, if you have any questions, please let us know, but, um, these gentlemen can have all the expertise on the project.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Stephen Leachman, I'm the Project Manager from Partners in Architecture and it has been a true privilege to be working on this project for the last couple of years and developing it. As compared to most projects that we do, out of necessity, we disturb sites, this has been one where we would tread very lightly and take as little as we could out of what's already there, not by cutting down any trees or changing the terrain very much, but by working directly with it as we wanted to respect the, uh, the nature of it as it's been there for centuries and, and as seen now in the name of the park, it's paying homage to the native peoples that once called that their land and still do today and so they're, they're invited there along with everybody else in Canton Township to come and enjoy nature. As, uh, Jeanette said, the majority of this site is undeveloped, uh, for future possibilities, obviously, but, uh, nature is going to be the predominant factor here going forward. Our area is just allowing a little bit of intrusion in there with the facilities that are currently in place, adding a couple of things that are creature comforts like some portable toilets and drinking fountain, some additional shade and some, uh, tables and, uh, benches and whatnot to sit down and yes, the centerpiece, at least at this point, is gonna be a very unique, uh, natural-based, uh, design for the playscape equipment, made, primarily made out of logs and various other, uh, natural elements that we've seen in various cities around the world, actually, and, uh, we're bringing that here in, in its kind of first phase of development here. Uh, this, this Earthscapes is the company that we're working with and, uh, they've done some very interesting things, so, part of the package does show some images of that, that could be very helpful for you to understand, but, uh, again, we're trying to tread very lightly and, and with the gentleman here at my, uh, right-hand side, he's the expert in terms of keeping this place natural and making it even more of what it already is. Jim?
Again, my name is Jim Eppink, I'm a landscape architect in the area and a planner. Uh, I think in addition to what Jeanette and Stephen had said, the things that we're really proud of is we're taking down zero trees, uh, so we're maintaining all the trees, we're adding sixty or seventy-five new trees, native species, plants and rain gardens. So, again, the idea is really to, to tread lightly on the property, to help improve it, to help the enjoyment of it. We're focused on low maintenance to no maintenance, uh, the, the playscape really truly is gonna be just a fantastic place for, uh, families throughout Canton Township and the surrounding areas to come and enjoy, so we're very proud of it, we appreciate the opportunity to work with the community and we're here to answer questions and ideally to help, uh, you as a community move this forward.
Yeah, um, what's an interpretive rain garden? What do we interpret? Exactly.
So, um.
Your answer, an interpretive dance?
Would, would you like that?
I would love that.
You probably haven't spoken my wife. So, so rain gardens are unique, right? They're, they're, it's, it's a, it's a tremendous ecological, uh, uh, planting that, that helps the environment, it helps butterflies and all sorts of, of flora and fauna, um, but on an odd day, someone might question, why aren't you maintaining that area? You know, so much of our communities are used to being mowed and fertilized and, and irrigated and everything else and this just isn't that, this is meant to be a, um, you know, kind of a combination between man-made, man-planted and letting nature take over. And so, a cynic might say, they're not maintaining that area of the park and so what we've done is planted it appropriately to get seasonal color, to get natural, uh, uh, plants and, and wildlife to, to call that home, but oftentimes what we find is really helpful for school-aged children, for families, really for anybody, is to put some signage up and to not only say, hey, this is a rain garden, uh, but this is. but this is why it's important. This is how it puts water back into the earth, how it promotes natural life and so forth. So we've provided, and I think there's samples in the site plan package, of four or five different signs that would be around some of the key areas of the park to help with that education, to explain to people why we're doing it, why it's important to the ecology, and how it's maintained, why it looks differently at different times of the year.
So they can interpret what's going on?
Can interpret it.
Gotcha. Thank you. I thought it was some sort of deep.
I would just add to what Jim said there. Beyond that, the fact that this site already has a series of drainage ditches that were put in in the previous development, we're taking those, cleaning those out, and this is where the natural water courses currently exist for the site drainage. So it's those we're beginning to work with and to create these bioswales, diverse environments within that area that would be a water course to begin with. So we're not really adding any. We're keeping all the ones that are there, and they all flow eventually to the existing stream that's on the site, which lends itself to the name of the park as well. So it's all about basically retaining all that in place and really not adding to it in any way, shape, or form.
Do you have anything?
What's the purpose of the gravel road and parking lot? Is it a cost issue or stormwater issue?
Both. We wanted to make sure that we stayed within the budget for the project. So most of this project is being funded by appropriations from community planning funding that had been allocated in the past cycle of funding, and so we don't have additional funds to be able to pay for a parking lot, but also with the fact that we know that a parking lot of that size would have a significant amount of stormwater that would need to be managed. And with the fact that it's already a wet area, that would have been really challenging without having to bring in other infrastructure.
Motion.
Chair, I move to approve the site plan for ZB West Nature Area 6125 North Ridge Road, tax parcel 028-99-0002-701, and 028-99-0001-001, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, except modifications recommended pursuant to Section 2.16b of the zoning ordinance for driveway width, parking and driveway surfacing, landscaping, lighting, sign design, and fencing as shown on the plans.
Support.
Okay, we have a commissioner. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Eganberger. Any further discussion? Commissioner Eganberger, could you call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eganberger, yes. Commissioner Janowski. Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber.
So what's the plan? When will this be finished?
So much like any federal funding, the timeline is very fluid. We are optimistic based on what we've heard recently that we would be able to bid this this summer and start construction this fall is our optimism. If not, it would probably be early next year. I mean, for as long as we've been trying to plan this park, it's nice to finally see it come to fruition, but based on the design, our biggest holdup is probably going to be the playground and the lead time that goes with the playground. So much of the other design components could happen fairly quickly. The pollinator garden that's already out there, the Parks Division did replant that this past year just because of how dry it was in 2023. They needed a little bit more seeding to help that come to the full beauty that it was supposed to be, and our goal is that we'll continue to add native plantings that are suitable for that environment, and the same with the trees that Jim had mentioned. We tried as much as possible to utilize some of the same species that are already on the property and just bring them to that area that doesn't have as much of the tree canopy. So hopefully by the end of next summer, we have a new park that we can share with everybody. Thank you all.
Our next item is also a township project. We are going to talk about the Preservation Park Pavilion, which is item number four on our agenda, 072SPX8196. We are considering the site plan for parcel number 072-99-0015-704, 500 North Ridge Road. The property is located on the east side of Ridge Road between Ridge Road and Salts. The proposed use is a township-initiated newly constructed pavilion. Patrick, tell us all about it, please.
Sure, thank you. This is also a township-sponsored project, and Jeanette Ilo is here to answer questions and present, as well as the project consultants, OHM Advisors, and Community Development Director John LaFever. So they can answer some of the technical questions and some of the background of the project. This is a project that's been a while in the making, and as many of us know, the Katie Boyer barn had burned down a number of years ago. I think it was in 2021. And so there have been a number of different efforts in terms of what to replace the barn with, what to do on the site. And so there were a lot of evaluations, both of what remained from the barn when it had burned and ultimately having to remove the debris, and evaluating what to put there next. And in looking at buildings, there were a number of considerations in terms of cost, applicable building and fire codes, as well as the functionality of what would go there next. And with a building like a barn, there were a number of limiting factors in terms of usefulness to the public, events, the things that Preservation Park is currently used for, as well as the overall vision of Cherry Hill Village and what we want to see in the future. So in the process of those efforts, there was a design for a pavilion, an open-air pavilion, which would allow multifunctional space for events, farmers' markets, things like that. There's an existing pavilion already in Preservation Park, so this would add to that existing amenity there. So it was something that could be done within the budget constraints, as well as for the number of different events and activities that the township is currently doing, has been doing in Cherry Hill Village, and wants to be doing in the future. So there are the architectural designs of the proposed pavilion in the packet, and like the previous project at ZB West Nature Area, this is a site plan that the Planning Enabling Act requires the Planning Commission to review. And also, there are some modifications to the site that are under the purview of the Township Board, where there's a modification from the zoning ordinance. So for example, the current parking lot is gravel, and it's functioned fairly well as a gravel parking lot, and there are improvements to that lot based on the area and the surfacing. But also because it is Preservation Park, there are a lot of historic buildings there. The gravel parking lot adds to the rural character of that park. The access management is going to continue to operate from Ridge Road the way it's illustrated on the plans and on the aerial photo also. Those drives will be delineated a little bit more. The parking areas will be delineated more, so it'll open up more available spaces. It'll be easier to find and to circulate that parking area. So that'll be a big improvement for some of the overall site parking in Cherry Hill Village as a whole. I'm not sure we'll have many cars parked there for village activities because of other available parking, but it's there as auxiliary parking if it's needed. So there are some modifications for the surfacing, the dumpster enclosure, which is located in a front yard area, but other than its location, it's designed to comply with the ordinances, and some proposed modifications for landscaping. So staff's recommendation is approval of the site plan for the Preservation Park Pavilion and other site improvements at 500 North Ridge Road, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, except modifications recommended pursuant to Section 2.16b of the zoning ordinance for driveway width, parking and driveway surfacing, landscaping, and lighting as shown on the plans. So that concludes our report. We'll be happy to take any questions, as well as other township staff and consultants.
Thank you, Patrick.
We're keeping the parking, park development coming. Join with me tonight are Claire Martin and David Borsma from OHM Advisors. They've been the leads on this project. And much like a lot of the community, we would have loved to have put a barn back on the property. It was really unfortunate that it happened, but much like Patrick had said, once we evaluated the optimal use for the space and what we would be doing, as well as the cost to build a new barn and put fire suppression systems in it and everything else, it just wasn't feasible for what we needed to do. So we have opted to or proposed a market pavilion. We call it a market pavilion, but really it's for any event or general use for the park, and it's going to be the same footprint that the barn was, which is a 30 by 70 space. And so we're utilizing the same space there. In doing this process, we realized there's a lot more opportunity than just putting a pavilion in that space. And when we were able to enter into an agreement with Wayne County to utilize some ARPA funds to activate Cherry Hill Village, we recognized that there's a really important component to making sure that Preservation Park is a part of that project. And we know that we don't want to just bring people to Cherry Hill Village. We want to expand where people are using the space and not just down in the central part. And Preservation Park is a really large space. Right now, it looks like a very gravelly space, and through the project, our goal is to really green up the environment, make it into a park that can be usable seven days a week by just general park users and not just on Sundays for the farmer's market. So yes, there's parking enhancements so people can park there, and then they'll be able to connect through all of these ARPA projects down into the village and utilize some of the future developments that you'll see in the coming months. And our intention is that there'll be activities going on there on a more regular basis. There's a lot more green space so that during events, we can have things going on in the grass lawn, as well as underneath the large pavilion, and also have concerts and other activities in that area. But more importantly, we wanted to make sure that we're recognizing that those historic structures are really important to this community. And so part of the project that we're doing is focusing on how can we highlight those spaces? David's done an excellent job of preparing a historic structure analysis for us, and the Facility Services Team has used that to start doing work to improve and enhance those buildings in accordance with all of the guidelines that they need to follow, but make sure that those are assets to the community. They're not just structures that happen to be in the park. So we're building around those spaces, but we're making sure that they look good as well. So our goal is that this is a space that everyone can enjoy and not just on Sundays, but this is the first step in kind of activating that north part of Cherry Hill Village, and then we'll see a lot more things coming from that. So I'll share. Claire and David are here to answer other technical questions, and we're happy to assist where we need.
Is this pavilion going to be?
Certainly. So there is a smaller-sized pavilion on the property, but the way the layout is, this will be suitable that you could rent the whole property and be able to use both pavilions. There's ample parking there, and then it will have connectivity to the village. So a lot of opportunity for public use just in general, but also if you wanted to reserve it for your own events, just like you would in any other pavilion in our parks.
I just got a quick question, slash comma, I guess, and you sort of answered it. I see you have the market sign on there. Is, and I don't know if that's intended to be there permanently or whatever, but is the intent to also use this pavilion to kind of move more of the farmer's market activities under that pavilion, kind of like, kind of like what Plymouth does with the gathering? Is that kind of the thought?
Yep. So the market sign that's currently on there is a space holder right now. We will eventually have a sign that's going on those peaks, but there'll be something there. But in general, the spaces of the stalls will become market sellable spaces. So our goal is to kind of reduce the number of white pop-up tents you see every Sunday and also have a space if it does rain, then you have a permanent structure. And it doesn't mean we're going to eliminate them altogether, but our goal is to try to make some permanent spaces that you can kind of come to expect certain vendors in certain locations when you visit on Sundays.
Thank you.
And what's the proposed construction timeframe for this one?
Oh, to have Dave Borsma, OHM Architect, Project Manager, Historic Architect, and State Code Official. Glad to get all that out.
Qualified.
We're hoping to get this out to bid in May and have it constructed over the summer and late fall, completed late fall. That is the current schedule. I did want to add a couple of things to Jeanette's description. We are recovering some of the parking area for a large green space in front of the pavilion, and that does two things. It gives an activity area for kids. It gives an act, and it also helps with dust control because this is a gravel lot, and we are resurfacing it with new compacted gravel because right now it's in rough shape. Some of the other things we're doing is adding ADA hard-surface concrete spaces and ADA pathways so that it is ADA compliant for at least the pavilions. And the Bartlet House. Bartlet House has a ramp right now. It needs some fixing up, but there's some additional space, an additional space over there. It's a van-sized space by the Bartlet House, and it connects to the ADA ramp. But yeah, that green space is going to help focus the activity on that site to this new pavilion. And I also wanted to add that that pavilion design was one of three concepts we came up with, and we borrowed some elements from the old Eastern Market Pavilion that was restored and put in Greenfield Village. So those gables are kind of reminiscent of the Greenfield Village pavilion that used to be in Eastern Market. And that's to keep with that. I'm not trying to recreate anything, but I'm trying to make something that fits in with the other historic buildings on the site.
Up the 3D rendering on the cover sheet, I think that's, it looks, the elevations are nice, but the 3D rendering really brings it to life.
Yeah, the elevations look kind of flat and plain, so.
I just, I think this is beautiful.
It's a timber frame structure with stone veneered pier bases. So it should, it should be around for a long time, as long as there's no vandalism and people setting things up.
No fireworks in the vicinity.
There is lighting around the building, so that'll hopefully be a little bit more secure than the barn was. It's immediate perimeter lighting, and there is a concrete walk around the outside perimeter of the pavilion as well. The water runoff, it's going to land on the concrete, and the concrete is sloped, and it'll naturally go into the grass and permeate through the soils.
Band on that question a little bit. Claire Martin with OHM. I'm leading a lot of the other Cherry Hill Village reimagined projects that, and I was here last month for the parking lot, so this is just adding on to the overall reimagining of Cherry Hill Village. But the grading, you can see around the pavilion off the back, it slopes off quite quickly, and so it'll drain off very easily, and the rest of the site is largely staying the same from a grading perspective. There's several catch basins throughout, so. Yeah, there's several spots. You can see the existing catch basins, right? Off the back, so there's plenty of spaces for the water to get to.
Maybe some of that ice buildup is because the parking lot hasn't been graded in a long time, so with the resurfacing, it'll help. So with the resurfacing, it'll help. Yeah, we. Well, we're sloping all the, all the concrete for drainage as well as sloping the inside of the pavilion so we don't end up with any ponding water inside the pavilion. But we did not plan on gutters on this building. Mostly because of the way it's designed to resonate the Eastern Market building. It shouldn't, it should not be an issue. Well, the main entrances have gables on them, so they should not have too much water. Those drain off into, yeah. Yeah, all of our entrances have, have gables on them, so they don't dump right into the main walking surfaces.
Anybody from the commission have anything to add or ask about?
Let's do it. I'm with to approve the site plan for the Preservation Park Pavilion and site improvements at 500 North Ridge Road. Text parcel 072-99-015-704. Subject to all state, county, and township requirements except modifications recommended pursuant to Section 2.16B of the zoning ordinance for driveway width, parking, and driveway surfacing landscaping and lighting as shown on the plans.
Support.
So much support for that, okay. We have, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by.
Janowski was first.
Okay, Commissioner Janowski. Any further discussion? Egenberger, could you please call the vote?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Yes. I look forward to this being built.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Have a good night.
All right, next on our agenda, we have two more items. The next item is Playground Daycare LLC. This item is item number 038-SPC-8136. We are considering a site plan for parcel number 038-99-0010-7036512 North Canton Center Road. The property is located on the east side of North Canton Center between Hanford and Warren. The proposed use is a childcare center. Patrick, tell us all about it, please.
Sure, thank you. The proposal is to have a childcare center occupy the existing site at 6512 North Canton Center Road, located on the east side of Canton Center Road between Hanford and Warren. So at the bottom of the page here, this road here is Hanford and it's just south of Fox Meadow Drive. So the site outlined in yellow there. And the site is Zone C2, Community Commercial. And childcare centers are permitted principal uses in the C2 District, subject to the land use standards of Section 6.02E of the zoning ordinance. So childcare centers, they're permitted uses, they're not special land uses. So there's not a separate public hearing or anything like that for this proposal. The site is about, site's about an acre in size and mostly surrounded by commercial uses and zoning districts to the north, south, and west. To the east is residential, single-family development and that's zoned for single-family residential use. For the land use itself, the, the site meets the daycare standards of Section 6.02E of the zoning ordinance, except for the rear yard setbacks on the south side. The zoning ordinance requires daycare centers to have a 25-foot side yard setback, which on the south side here is less than 25 feet. The applicants obtained a variance for this setback on March 14th, 2024. The zoning board of appeals approved a variance to permit the existing principal structure to be less than 25 feet from the southern lot line. The outdoor day, the outdoor play area that's proposed and will be fenced, that area will meet those minimum setbacks. Some of the findings from the zoning board of appeals are that it's an existing setback of a building. It's not a new development. There's no expansion of the building. Also, the, the use and development to the south is a commercial use, so it's a compatible use. And finally, it's unique that essentially the rear side of the building is abutting the rear side of an adjacent building, so the impact is minimal, if at all. The site is designed to meet the standards of the zoning ordinance for both daycare centers and development in the C2 District. There are a couple of additional items that the applicants have applied for variances. And these additional variances were uncovered by staff when we were doing the much more comprehensive site plan review. Otherwise, we would have had this on the March zoning board of appeals meeting. So there are two additional variances that the applicant has applied for and will be heard at the upcoming ZVA meeting next week. And they are setback variances for the proposed fencing. There's proposed decorative fencing to outline the outdoor play area. And so there are some setback variances related to the front yard setback from Fox Meadow Drive to the north. Also, there's a request for the dumpster location to be located in a front yard area. I'll bring up the plans here. The dumpster enclosure location is located almost even with the building, but it appears to encroach slightly into the front yard area. So the front yard area, there's two front yards for the site because it's a corner lot. So Canton Center Road to the west is a front yard and Fox Meadow Drive to the north is a front yard. And previous versions of the plan showed the dumpster enclosure encroaching slightly into this front yard area. So if it still does, the variance application has been made. And then also with the fence delineation outlined here on the plan is the proposed fencing and some of it encroaches into the front yard setback, but it's quite a ways away from Fox Meadow Drive. And even though it's technically a front yard area, that's a residential street, so it should be low-speed traffic and that outdoor play area is fenced. The last thing that I want to mention about the proposed plan is that the vegetation in the eastern part of the site is proposed to be retained. And there's additional vegetation and trees that are proposed to be planted in that area. The zoning ordinance has requirements for buffer landscaping between a commercial use and a residential use. So to the east are residential uses. So there are many existing mature trees that are on the site on the east end, both in a double row. The applicant is proposing to supplement those with some additional trees to meet the landscaping requirements. So in addition to preserving the current trees, adding some new trees, and the setback distance from the existing building, the proposed outdoor play area, the site's designed to minimize the impact on adjacent neighboring uses. So with that, our recommendation is approval of the site plan for a daycare center at 6512 North Canton Center Road, subject to all state, county, and township requirements and subject to the following four conditions. First, that the loading area is not required pursuant to Section 4.02B7 of the zoning ordinance. Second, that the frontage along Fox Meadow Drive be supplemented with additional landscaping to meet the frontage landscape requirements where other landscape standards do not apply along that frontage. Third, that the lighting comply with Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. And fourth, that any necessary variances for the fencing and dumpster location be obtained prior to township board review of the site plan. So that concludes our staff review and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. I'm the project sponsor here, I'm guessing. Tell us your name and address for that.
Hi, my name is Barb Potter and I'm the architect. My address is 630 Terrace Lane in Ypsilanti, Michigan, 48198. And I have Jancy Quintana here. She's the director of the daycare center. Do you need her address?
46035 Greystone Lane, Canton, Michigan.
And I guess Patrick explained it very well. It's the only thing I want to point out here is where he was talking about the variances. If you see those two dash lines that kind of go through the middle of the building there, that's a seven and a half foot swath that is everything between our front and side setback. And that is the reason we need a variance for the dumpster enclosure and the fence because with the addition of the private road there, that got us two front yard setbacks. So it, you know, it kind of make it unusable if we couldn't use that front yard setback. Other than that, as far as the exterior, we're basically just bringing, bringing things up to the current zoning ordinance. Whereas before, there wasn't a dumpster enclosure at all and we're adding some, some lighting to comply with the zoning. Did anyone have any questions?
Out, we'll go through the.
Opening the floor. I don't really have any questions. I just want to say, I'm like the other daycare that was before us tonight and I don't want, again, I don't want anyone to think that I'm anti daycare. The road is.
We're making our own judgments, okay.
Okay, I mean, my kids are grown, so I'm done, yeah, I'm done with little kids. No, I'm kidding. Obviously, the road situation is quite a bit different here at this location than it is at the other facility. The other thing I appreciate about this is reusing an existing building that isn't otherwise being used right now. So yeah, I appreciate those things and don't really have any major issues with this development. Plan traffic. Oh, okay. Yeah, exactly. That's why I tell my kids to do. Yes. They still talk, we don't plan traffic.
I was just curious how, so you got variances because of Fox Meadow, is that correct?
Part of it is, yeah, because it's there, it's technically a corner lot. It's a private road, so I don't know if access is even possible and whether that would be granted if the association has jurisdiction there. But yeah, technically, because it's adjoining a road, it becomes a front yard.
I'm, yeah, I was just curious how, because they put a road there, it makes this non-conforming. It's really not fair, you know, so.
And it's because that road's there is that it's not conforming?
Yeah.
Yeah, now for a daycare.
It's in the front yard now. Yeah, I was just curious. So they are getting their variances, is that correct?
Correct. They, they obtained probably, if I had to rank the, the variances, the more difficult of the three, they've already obtained and that's the higher setbacks for daycare centers. So this variance on the south side, the south side of the property for that setback has already been obtained. The other ones are, I will call them easy, but easier because they're a little less impactful and they're there, as you mentioned, just because there's a road there to the north, a road they don't access. So by way of a road being there, it creates a front yard. So, so the, that'll be part of the consideration of the zoning board of appeals and because they evaluate practical difficulty standards, I think they'll, they'll recognize some of the challenges presented by that non-access road.
Good. That's all I got.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I, just to comment on daycares, we've got a lot of kids. That's all I can say. So there must be a market.
I'm actually a certified occupational therapist assistant, so it's not going to be just a regular daycare. There's going to be a specialized curriculum to help prevent developmental delays in infants and in toddlers. I have a lot of expertise. I have a lot of experience. I worked 10 years in the pediatric field. I've worked with children of all ages with processing disorders, neurological disorders, and processing disorders. So it's not going to be your drop-off daycare where children are just going to be babysat. So I think that I'm going to bring value to the community and it's going to be something that parents will appreciate.
Thank you.
Oh, you felt that? You felt that?
Can we put a car wash? Can we put, can I self-storage?
I'm, I'm good. No, it's all good. We saw it at the commission, at the zoning board, so yeah, I understand the problems they're having, but that's, that's a good solution.
Bacon building that's been there for a long time.
Since I've been shamed, I'll make the motion.
I move to recommend approval of the site plan for a daycare center at 6512 North Canton Center Road on parcel number 038990010703, subject to all state, county, and township requirements and subject to the following conditions. That the loading area is not required pursuant, pursuant to Section 4.02B7 of the zoning ordinance. Two, that the frontage along Fox Meadow Drive be supplemented with additional landscaping to meet the frontage landscape requirements where other landscape standards do not apply along that frontage. Three, that the lighting comply with Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. And four, that any necessary variances for the fencing and dumpster location be obtained prior to township board review of the site plan.
Support.
A motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Janowski. Any further discussion? Commissioner Egenberger, could you please call the vote?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Yes, very good. We wish you the best. Great.
Last one?
Well, no, Erin still gets her time.
Got to give Erin her time.
That's right.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is 052-SPP-7828 Cherry Hill Preserve. We are considering preliminary site plan for several parcels on Cherry Hill Road. North of Cherry Hill, between Lots and John Hicks. The proposed use is detached, single-family residential development containing 19 units.
Sure, thank you. The proposal is a single-family detached residential development, a cul-de-sac with 19 units. And going back about two and a half years, in July of 2021, the Township Board approved a site plan for this site for a development that consisted of 24 units, specifically 12 buildings, two units each. And that was recommended by the Planning Commission for approval in June of 2021. That site plan approval eventually expired and a different development plan is proposed now with, instead of two, attached two-unit buildings, there's 19 single detached buildings. So overall, it is five fewer units. The allowable density for the current R4 zoning district is up to 5.18 units per acre. And the applicant proposes a density of a little under half that at 2.55 units per acre. One of the reasons that the density is low, is relatively low, I'll say, is because there are a number of wetlands on the site. It's very difficult, if not impossible, to develop the site for a residential development without either obtaining Eagle permits for filling wetlands as well as wetland setback encroachments. The zoning ordinance requires wetland setbacks of at least 25 feet. And there are a number of areas of the site where there are wetland setback variances requested. That will be a separate application to the zoning board of appeals. In 2020, the zoning board of appeals did approve variances from the 25-foot wetland setback requirement for the previous development. So there will have to be a new application to the zoning board of appeals and there will be a new evaluation based on the variance criteria of the zoning ordinance. So that'll be a separate matter to be addressed by the zoning board of appeals if the project moves forward from the Planning Commission. Currently, we're at the stage of preliminary site plan review. The development is proposed as a detached condominium. So if the. The development is proposed as a detached condominium, so if the site plan is recommended for approval by the planning commission, the preliminary site plan will proceed to the township board for final action. If the preliminary site plan is approved by the township board, then the applicant will proceed to final site plan review. So there will be another opportunity for the planning commission and the board to review the site plan again during a final site plan review. The site is designed to meet the standards of the zoning ordinance for the dimensional standards, setbacks, with the exception of the wetland setbacks that we noted before. The architecture of the buildings, there are some renderings that are submitted that show 50% brick or more, and the landscaping is designed to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. There are several existing regulated trees on the site. About 61% of the trees will be preserved. The applicant proposes to mitigate the removed trees that are classified as landmark trees and the non-landmark regulated trees in accordance with Article 5A of the zoning ordinance. There will be some minor plan changes required to conform, or to confirm the final numbers prior to the issuance of a tree removal permit, but the applicant is intending to meet the tree removal and replacement standards that are in the zoning ordinance based on that Staff's recommendation is approval of the Cherry Hill Preserve preliminary site plan for 19 detached, single-family residences, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and subject to the following four conditions being fulfilled prior to township board review of the preliminary site plan. First is revisions to the plan that include monument signage. Second, setting the garages back 22 feet from the sidewalk wherever possible. Third, obtaining necessary variances from the zoning board of appeals. And fourth, satisfactory review of the master deed and bylaws by township legal counsel. Looking at number two for setting the garages back 22 feet from the sidewalk, although the minimum setback of 20 feet is met on the plans, we recommend trying to get that distance to 22 feet wherever possible. Going from 20 feet to 22 feet, it adds a little bit more space, it lowers the incidence of vehicles overhanging a sidewalk. Not that they can't fit within 20 feet, but 22 feet allows a little bit more distance between the front of the gar, the car and the garage door. Also, the development is proposed as detached condos, so these won't be large lots, individual lots. These will be the detached condos where the unit is essentially the building, and there'll be common elements throughout the development. So that concludes our staff report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. The project sponsor here? Process of elimination. You have a big audience, don't be, don't be too nervous.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me? Oh, there we go. My name is Bruce Michael. I'm at 16285 West 13 Mile Road, Southfield, Michigan, and I'm here to answer questions. I'm not going to make any statements, so y'all can go home.
Open it up. Anybody got anything?
We've been talking about water. You're building in a wetland, right? I'm just curious. Maybe that's to the planning commission, though. I see a lot of wetland, and I see the, is the, are the buildings actually being built in the wetlands? Is that what I'm seeing on the drawing? Meaning the rear of those buildings? Are they sitting in a wetland? Here, what is that? How do you interpret that? Is that, is it actually built into the wetland? Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, so I can, these gray areas, these are areas where there are existing wetlands and where there's proposed filling of the wetlands.
Okay.
So, for example, there are some, the most developable areas of the site are closer to Cherry Hill Road where there's more upland area. And then to actually get from the upland areas on the south side of the site to the north side of the site, there's a wetland in between, so there's proposed wetland fill for the road to cross into that wetland. And then once in to the upland areas on the north side of the site, there's proposed filling of the adjacent wetland areas to fit the detached condos. So there would be permits required from Eagle for wetland filling and any required mitigation.
Okay, thank you.
When we did the original approval, we did obtain a wetland fill permit for pretty much the same area, and we're just going back to Eagle to get it reissued.
We're not creating potential water issues on neighboring properties by filling these wetlands? I mean, I, I know that store, if I believe, I'm looking at the aerial map correctly, I believe that's Frank's Firewood to the east, and then there's a subdivision just beyond that. You got permits before, so I assume the answer is no, but the question probably needs to be asked, given what we're dealing with township-wide right now.
So first of all, we're meeting the county requirements in terms of, you know, 100-year storm retention, and actually using some of the wet, wetland areas as, I don't want to call it storage, but we're allowing the rear yards that are behind the units to drain into the, into the wetland areas, but we're capturing any roof drainage that's going off in, in a small storm sewers that are behind each of the, each of the buildings, and they basically pick up the downspouts.
So the dark shaded wetland areas, those are just dark shade because those are the impacted wetland areas, correct? As opposed to the other areas that are designated as wetland on this site plan?
Yes, those would be the proposed fill areas, correct? And the reason there's really wetlands here is it's flat, it's a very, very flat site, and it's quite clayey.
Yep.
So the water just doesn't want to go anywhere, and it can't sink in.
That's a lot of can.
Exactly. Most of can. Clay is, clay is our, yeah, I'm surprised we weren't designated the clay capital of the world.
Yeah.
Super quick question. I think you just squeeze into the Plymouth Canton School District with this development?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I have some. I just noticed your, your water main's a, a long dead end, is that correct? You're not...
Yes, and it was previously approved by engineering, and, and actually state water permits were issued when we originally got this approved.
So it was MBEQ that approved the water main?
Yes, now Eagle, yes, correct. We were ready to build it, and my wife suddenly passed away and decided not to proceed.
So you're reapplying for those permits as a renewal, is that what you're doing?
We probably had to move things slightly, so they may make us reissue the permit again. I'm not certain exactly what Eagle will do. We'll try to just basically modify what we have, but I'm not sure exactly if it's the same reviewers from three years ago, or if they want to see it started over again or what. We'll just have to go through that process.
Well, the reason I bring it up is Eagle heavily discourages long dead-end water mains because of stagnation, and back then, they were approving them, but you, I think you're going to have a challenge getting that approved. Also, Patrick, the engineering department was okay with this long dead end?
I think they had originally reviewed the permitted and recommended approval of the proposed water main.
Okay.
Will they review this again?
They will.
Just kind of alerting you what you may be up against. Okay.
Before this, were these duets? Like, they were attached, I heard, is that true?
Yes, the original, the original idea was to basically an affordable duplex, a smaller affordable duplex units for, you know, active adults, two, two units side by side. You know, COVID hit, and construction costs in '21 went up four to seven times for every single item versus one to two times. And yes, all the prices could go up, the retail price of the house could go up, but they really frankly weren't affordable anymore.
Right.
You know, you're suddenly in a different market, so along with that, and my personal situation, we decided to stop for a bit, and, and now we're just basically going to sell the lots to a third-party builder that is comfortable with this and wants to do Colonials, and of course, it's in a great school district, so they're happy to do what would be family housing versus our original concept we had.
Yeah, my condolences as well.
Thank you. Forty-four years.
Anybody else have it? We didn't shame Doug on this one, so.
Not a child can say it.
Yeah. Our curmudgeon.
Yeah.
So my acrobat crashed, so someone else is going to have to read it.
I gotta find it. Let's see. Okay, I move to recommend approval of the Cherry Hill Preserve preliminary site plan for 19 detached, single-family residents on parcel number 71-052-9900 or 2-00071, and 71-052-99004-001, and 71-052-990044-002, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and subject to the following conditions being fulfilled prior to township board review of the preliminary site plan: revision of the site plan that includes monumental signage, setting, setting the garages back 22 feet from the sidewalk whatever, wherever possible, obtaining necessary variances from the zoning board of appeals, and satisfactory review of the master deed and bylaws by the township legal counsel.
Support. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Singh. Any further discussion? Egenberger, could you call the vote?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairman Zuber.
Yes. All right. Next, Patrick. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's up to, it's up, it's up to Erin, it's up to Erin.
Erin, we're all falling asleep up here.
We got, we got a lot to discuss tonight.
All right, that's what I like to hear.
But I'm an easy act to follow, so.
No, we're actually, we don't have anything really to update today. We have a couple of chapters that McKenna has provided to us that we are very meticulously reviewing and providing some edits to them. We are drafting some text of our own, so some draft texts will be coming, coming to you in the next couple of weeks, but it's, we're not ready to discuss anything at this time, so.
Darn it!
Will we be having a, will we have to have, are they going to be on our regular planning commission meeting agenda, or will we have to have the second meeting each month to do that?
We're going to continue doing those second meetings for a while. We will not have one in this month, on the 15th, as we will be out of town, out of conference. So...
A boondoggle for, for the planning department?
So, yeah, so we will send you the, the tax, so that way you can review it at your leisure, and then we can discuss it at more, more depth at the, the May planning commission.
Did your boss approve that, that trip?
Did.
I have to have a talk with him.
And my expense account as well.
I might have to have a talk with him.
No meeting on the 15th, right?
No meeting on the 15th, nope. Or you, I mean, you can, but we won't be here this month.
Everyone, pay attention, I know you want to leave.
File your taxes, don't come here.
That's good, because they're just going to miss it.
I'm sure move adjournment.
Second.
All right, motion to adjourn by Commissioner Watkins, support by, who was that? Commissioner Janowski?
Me, me.
You, Commissioner Weber, okay. On the paper.
Aye.
Aye. Feel free to leave while you're voting, okay?